Good morning and welcome to our budget workshop. I'll call our meeting to order and roll call just by hand. Everyone's present. We'll have our invocation by Ann Huggins and our pledge by Chris Hunley. If you'll stand please.
Legislate agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is this what you did yesterday? Okay. Our next item is the presentation of the proposed budget which we were able to do yesterday at our regular meeting. So we will not be taking a break after that as on our agenda. So we will open it to see if there are any questions from the presentation yesterday from any of the commissioners who would like to have or speak.
Can I just do a couple of follow-ups yesterday before we go into the detailed questions? I want to pass out a letter. Commissioner Coulson had asked about the fire tax increase for Eastern Pines. We do have a letter that they had submitted as part of their budget package. The staff is going to pass that out. And basically like I explained yesterday, they're saying that the tax increase is to make debt service on the new building they're planning. We don't know the cost of the building or what that debt service payment is or any of the details. If you would like that, we could make that request to the non-profit board. But that's the first follow-up.
Okay, do we have a question or a motion or a comment or does anybody want that? Yes, Ann. Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you. I was having a hard time reading the up saying you can just yell at me next time, it's all right. Let's vote please on the approval of the agenda.
The second item I wanted just to clarify from yesterday was I think there was some confusion among the workforce when I was talking about the possibility of elimination of the employee health insurance for retirement benefit. I just want to clarify that what I was speaking of was at for say hypothetically employees hired for order to do this from July 1 going forward, not for anybody who's currently an employee of the organization who's under whatever vetting rules for their five, 10, 15, 20, whatever category of required number of years you require. It was meant to be new employees being onboarded at some future date, if it's a July 1 date or January 1 date, 2020, whatever it would be. The last thing, just wanted to pass out, again, the staff had passed this out. This is a follow-up to the comment about the farm built library. We did not put this in your binder booklet. This is their formal request for the board's consideration of $25,000 towards their new library that they're tearing down their old library and building a new one on the same site and had made as part of their library funding request the $10,000 which is an ongoing appropriation as a sustaining agency also made it a request for $25,000 toward the replacement structure. That's just for your information. And that's all I have.
Okay. Are there any questions? Anyone would I like to propose before we move forward? Mary?
Employees of the school system to be equipping themselves with weapons, I guess that's the best word, weapons we were leaning towards during the body cameras. And I think it was yesterday that the body cameras is taken out of the budget?
Request, the expansion segment, we're still waiting word on a kind of call to Representatives Office and Congress proposing adding legislation in the proposed budget. I have a return call back about how the word is to whether body cameras, the pre-child services program, or mental health court, those three things, if one of those or any of those might be proposed fund. But yeah, so it was taken out as a, as part of that $10 or $11 million expansion request that was not contained.
So my concern is based on the previous history of the General Assembly who sends mandates down without funding and we cannot count on their perceived ideology that they're going to fund this and it comes down without funds. My whole thing is you hear me talk about we're being the best in the east. If we're going to be best in the east, we need to be best, I'm saying B-E-S-T, not the V. Best, best in the east, we need to be pro-actionary. We need to be ready. The children that I've been exposed to have talked about how they're afraid of something happening and how this and parents are afraid of it. We need to take precautions about that. We don't need to be reactionary. I rather emphasize, I have three grandsons and one granddaughter and I have a lot of other sons in the community who are concerned about being safe in the school. And we need to take that at the top of our thing. If they don't fund it, then what's going to happen? That's my question. If they don't fund, General Assembly does not fund body camera. Body cameras and if we, if we come up with a provision, I'd like for us to attach the fact that the policy that our sheriff, current sheriff office does, I won't talk about persons, I'll talk about offices. If our current offices come up with a policy that when the law enforcement officer goes on duty, that every incident they respond to before they get out the car or when they're talking about it, I want the body camera on. I don't want Brian to worry about his twin boys, you got boys. I don't want him worrying about his young girl. I want the answer to be in the fact that we can look at it from different angles. Now, I know we have not had it here, but anytime, and I know media is saying that it's fake news, but anytime you have three, more than one national media covering the same incident with conclusions are drawn by the rest of us who's sitting there looking. So I like for us to be really the best and security is super important to me for functioning within the community. That's my take. I might say something later on, but that's at, that was at the top of my dream last night. Thank you.
Yes, the second?
My comment is that we're going to Raleigh tomorrow. And I know we always support the association policies and we naturally we support them priorities and whatever. But in the outline that you presented to us yesterday, Scott, in the part that says a look forward, which is part of what just Mary was talking about, the acknowledgement of unfunded needs, as when we go to Raleigh tomorrow, I'm asking, could we talk to our delegation about these in addition to what the association is supporting? Yeah, I mean, but.
Yes, I think so.
I mean, this is an opportunity to, to really push this.
These three items are actually normally items that are locally funded, but just like last year, there was a special carve-out for economic development. One of our representatives got an allocation of $250,000 for Pitt County and the City Grandville jointly to use for economic development purposes, which we've received and we're pursuing a couple of different projects using that money. I guess that was a over and beyond type of appropriation that we received, nothing that's, the responsibility of the General Assembly has a have to do. So if we get one of these three or all three of them, that'll be gravy basically in the process.
Having served on Economic Development Board for this entity, Pitt County Board of Commissioners, we may or may not get the funds that they send here or and we may not get an accountability record of it either. So I'm, history states certain things and I'm eerie of that. Possibilities are not assurances for me. And yes, we do do that when we go, but I just ask these two gentlemen on both sides of me and neither one of them are going tomorrow. And I don't want it seem like it's an issue with two or three from the board. This needs to be something, we need, but let me ask you a question, Scott. How many counties east of North Carolina, since we are the best, and I don't doubt that. So how many counties in eastern North Carolina have body cameras? How many does not? Do we know that information?
The sheriff answered my last, I don't know about something. May I ask you to answer that in her presentation? Unless you want the chairman to answer that?
Well, I can't go no further.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm very concerned. Awesome log in there. This is the largest tax increase that I've seen since I've been a commissioner. I think it's probably one of the largest one that we've done. My concern is not that we don't need it, but it's coming at a time that is most vulnerable to our citizens on fixed income and our senior citizen, citizen economic depressed communities. And I'm very, I'm very concerned about that. And I just want, if you could look into it as you, as you go through the presentation, as we hear the presentation go through, to make, Scott, to see can we find some kind of ways that we can do something about that. That is my, that is my issue right now, but I'm willing to listen.
How to reformulate or refashion what's been presented. What is presented as the manager's recommended budget, like in the presentation yesterday, is never what, at the end of the day, what you adopt at budget time. It's always, there's something tweaked here or something tweaked there, but it's the starting point out the gate that sets the foundation for the, your discussions moving forward and hopefully your direction to us, what you want us to do. So hopefully at the end of this, we will have clear direction from you and be able to bring back a refashion, reformulated budget that meets hopefully the expectations of all nine.
Chairman?
Could I just say one thing following up what he said? The process in the past has, and it has always been and it has gone very well. I think if we listen today, we ask questions today of the presenters, if there's something that comes by us or past us. And then we, if we have questions or concerns and we want to say, would you look into this? Is it possible that we could add one more person or is it possible that we could take away one, whatever it is? And then Brian and Scott take it back with their group. They talk and the first thing that happens, not tomorrow morning, but Thursday morning, they will bring back the answers and some direction to those questions. It's not like we, the presenter from each one of our departments has their plan, they are having their opportunity to present it to us. It doesn't mean that we can ask them questions, but the deal is we listen carefully to what they present and what we have in our packet. If we have a question at the end, we direct it to Brian and Scott. And I mean, there's no way we can get those answers on the spot. So that's how we open the next meeting tomorrow, is getting those answers and if you have more questions in the morning about the presentations today.
Frankly, I can't believe that because yesterday you said that we can ask questions at the beginning of this session or was I the only one who heard that? Well, I asked a question and to delay the answer is not an answer.
What question?
I asked a question about the presentation relating to body cameras. I'm, I'm really serious about the children and the school system.
She's fixing to present that so we can talk about it then. I don't think anybody was avoiding your question. It was just that I don't think any of us can answer it. I think we'll hear it in the presentation.
So I'll wait for the answer from our sheriff. If I don't hear it, I will raise the same question so that this board knows that because I feel that my question was raised based on what was said yesterday. And to not get an answer and to delay it should come out in the sheriff presentation. If not, I will question, you just said we couldn't question the presentations of the presenters. We asked Scott, so I heard, I heard we can't question the presentation of the presenter. Well, maybe we need to recall, call back the recording. I think I'm a member of this board, Mr. Fitrick, Mike Fitz, Fitz, Fitzpatrick. I'm a member of this board and I represent a segment of this community and I think I need to be heard. And I think I don't like you cutting me off every time I waste a question.
As the sheriff comes up to make her presentation, I want to say as well, as, as questions are posed, obviously as they're, as they're posed in the workshop and we bring back the answers to you, obviously the full board receives them. If, if a board member asks something offline for some analysis, we will try then to bring that back so the full board gets the information so that, we always try to, whether it's budget related or non-budget related, if one board member asks for a piece of information, we like to then arm everybody with that piece of information so they're not walking into a meeting or into a budget session and putting something down that then nobody else has any knowledge of. So we'll try to keep that commitment that as questions are formulated offline, if they are, we will then pass that on to everybody.
Thank you.
Good morning and it's a pleasure to be here. This is my first board meeting, becoming big and proud to have the board that is here now, also in the same position that I am in, and you're new to the board as well, so I guess we will all learn together. So to begin with my introduction, the mission of Pitt County Sheriff's Office. The mission of Pitt County Sheriff's Office is to serve, protect, and defend the community with integrity and sound judgment in a manner respectful of the trust that has been placed upon us while.
Preserving the rights and dignity of all. Vision, our vision is to ensure the future quality of our citizens. The Pitt County Sheriff's Office sets the standard in public safety through innovation and commitment while recruiting a dynamic workforce that meets the profile of the community. We will strategically plan and prepare for the future needs in law enforcement, detention services, and civil process. Values. We believe in striving to be a good citizen and beneficial member of our community, state, and nation. It is our duty to serve mankind, to safeguard the lives and properties of others, and to respect the constitutional rights of all. The badge is a symbol of public trust in obeying the laws of the land and the regulations of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, in supporting ongoing organizational change that strengthens our ability and capacity to serve. So this is a structure of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office as it relates to myself as the sheriff. I do have three chief deputies. I did that because I feel that each division needs to have individual attention so that we will not have a favorite stepchild or a favorite child. We then have our patrol division, investigative, investigation division, and administration division that is covered by those three chiefs. Fundamental services, as you can see, some of our fundamental services are the civil process unit, support services, court, security services, criminal investigations and such. We provide several services to the citizens of Pitt County in which experience officers volunteer for a chance to participate. One of these services is our special response team, the SRT team, where each volunteer has to compete in a dynamic application process to be considered. If they make the team, they have to compete, complete intense physical and marksmanship testing every three months to remain an active member. Due to frequent call-outs and extra stress placed on those that participate, we always request that the 16 members be compensated $250 per quarter for their additional sacrifices. Unfortunately, the manager's recommended budget only provides $4,000 of the $16,000 necessary for this compensation. We have historically purchased, purchased all of our special response teams equipment from asset forfeiture funds. In the fiscal year of 2018-19, we were forced to use most of this funding on new vehicles. This has left us with no funding for the needed tactical equipment upgrades. We requested $34,000 with nothing being recommended for this purpose. Community engagement. You will see here some of the ways that we are engaged with our community, such as building bridges, bully prevention workshops, our citizens academies, Pitt Grandville Crime Stoppers, our senior check program, our senior prom, which is very special to our senior citizens here in Pitt County, summer camp. Summer camp is shared understanding, monitoring, mentoring, educating, and rewarding our youth. In the fiscal year 2018-19, we completed our seventh camp, which was a tremendous success. Previous campers continue to volunteer as camp counselors. We also have a tremendous amount of help from the Sheriff's Office employees who volunteer on their days off. The camp operates Monday through Thursday, 7:30 to 5:30 PM, and is available at a low cost for both taxpayers and parents of attending children. The parents who are financially able to pay for their child's attendance are only asked to contribute $10 a week which is put back into the camp. Scholarships are provided for families who are unable to contribute due to lack of resources. All of this is made possible through donations from local businesses such as Penn Co. Products, who ask employees for donations which are then matched by their president and then again by the company. All remaining funds are utilized for the purchase of book bags and supplies in preparation of them going back to school. Now I want to talk about some of our performances. Our performances, some of the highlights of our performances include, we've responded to more than 33,000 calls from citizens. We've performed more than 36,194 business checks. We've created more than 6,848 reports documenting criminal activity. Our crime statistics, our Part 1 violent crimes are down 1% as of today. Our Part 1 property crimes are down 19%. Part 2 offenses are also down 16%. When we talk about those Part 1 crimes, those are your violent property crimes. Our Part 2 crime consists of things such as simple assault, curfew offenses, and loitering, embezzlement, forgery, counterfeiting, disorderly conduct, and you can see the rest. Well, you may not see the rest, but drug offenses, fraud, gambling, liquor offenses, those types of things. We believe our crime rates are falling due to officer presence through the community policing, active and sustained patrols and business checks. These methods of policing are and will continue to be a priority of my administration. Sex offender registry. For the fiscal year of 2019, deputies conducted a minimum, and this is a minimum, of four checks per sex offender or per sex offender for the year. Additionally, we performed two mandated checks that require the offender report to our office and present their certified verification letters. Sex offender arrests shows the numbers of arrests for registered sex offenders failing to maintain registration in compliance with North Carolina sex offender and public protection registration programs. It does not include arrests for unrelated matters. Validated completed monthly on multiple sex offender files to ensure the complete and accurate, that they are complete and accurate, which also confirms entries into NCIC and DCIN. These entries assist in providing law enforcement agencies through, throughout the country, necessary sex offender registration information and the North Carolina SBI in providing up-to-date information for this public on the North Carolina sex offender registry. Verification letters are sent to addresses provided by the offender twice per year. That person has to return the verification form in person to the Sheriff's Office within three business days of its receipt. Our handgun or our CCW applications and gun permits process. Handgun purchase permit, citizens pay $5, which the county keeps for our, for our processing the paperwork. Concealed handgun permits, which are the new ones, the citizens pay $90 and $45 goes to the state of North Carolina and the county keeps $45 for our processing the paperwork and fingerprinting fees. The renewals on the concealed handgun permits, citizens pay $75 and $40 goes to the state of North Carolina and the county keeps $35 for processing that paperwork. In the fiscal year of 2019, the Sheriff's Office received 24, over 24,000 civil and criminal processes. 18,000 were servable and 14,000 of them were served with an 80% service rate. The total numbers of papers for service has decreased this fiscal year, however, our service rate has continued to increase. An 80% service rate is considered fantastic for our. An eighty percent service rate is considered fantastic for our agency. We are paid officer, or we, I'm sorry. Uh, we are paid officer fees prior to attempting service on civil papers. We are also paid on commission on papers requiring seizure of money and/or property after service. Revenue fees collected and deposited into the general fund from these sources in the fiscal year of twenty nineteen was over three hundred thousand dollars. Budget. This slide highlights our most important budget requests for the fiscal year of twenty twenty. We believe these requests are imperative for meeting the performance standards demanded by our citizens. In this budget, you will see the county manager recommended seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for K nine and seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars for training, a total increase of forty-seven thousand five hundred in these line items. However, he recommends a large reduction in several line items, such as office supplies and law enforcement equipment. Having to supplement these reductions may prohibit increased training or the purchase of a K nine. Now, we intentionally held back in our law enforcement equipment line um, so that we could supplement the shortage that we had in our vehicle maintenance in an effort to be good stewards of our citizens' tax money. Um, and in an effort not to appear before this board, again, asking for additional monies. The budget, our budget is also inflated by fifty thousand dollars CIP for courthouse security cameras and the allied security contract costing a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. These items increase my budget by two thousand and three dollars, two thousand, two hundred thousand three dollars. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little tongue twisted here. It is in my opinion that these items should not be in my budget. Specifically, since the opinion of the Sheriff's Association is that the office of the sheriff is only responsible for the security in the courtroom, not the courthouse itself. At my direction, agency staff have launched a body worn camera demonstration initiative for the Sheriff's Office this year. Staff selected body cameras offered by four different manufacturers to deploy during the demonstration initiative. These cameras were identified as being four of the most widely used body camera platforms by law enforcement agencies nationally. Once we identified and selected the four body cameras we wanted to deploy as a part of the initiative, we transitioned into the assessment phase of the initiative. As of today, we have completed our first deployment and assessment and have now transitioned into the second deployment. The body camera assessment being conducted by our staff is for a period of thirty days each. These cameras are deployed in the field for real-world evaluations by the staff that will be using these cameras in the future. The body camera that we selected to be a part of this demonstration initiative are Coban, WatchGuard, Axon, and GTAC. Early in the fiscal year twenty nineteen, Sheriff's Office employees located grant funding that would pay fifty percent of all costs associated with the implementation of body wearing, of a body worn camera program, which included cloud-based data storage. Then Sheriff Elks approved the use of the asset forfeiture money to pay for what would have been our portion of the cost. The funding was approved by the grantor, but not accepted by Scott Elliott. The body worn camera project could have been started with no county funds. In January of twenty nineteen, the body worn cam, camera technology I requested was removed from the capital improvement plan. And I was promised funding in my twenty nineteen twenty, uh, twenty budget. Funding for the body camera technology has been requested numerous times in past budgets. Our agency is still one of only few in the state that doesn't have this important technology. I believe Taro County has body cameras, and do they even have a stoplight? The Sheriff's Office routinely receives phone calls from concerned citizens seeking answers from body camera video. Our general response is to let them know we don't have body cameras, but that everyone is working together to get them. Unfortunately, if we don't get body cameras in our twenty nineteen twenty budget, we can no longer honestly respond in that manner. As stated before, we have found grants and we have offered asset seizure money and have requested them in multiple budgets to no avail. We will explain to the citizens that it is a priority of the Sheriff's Office, but not that of the county administration. I truly hope the Sheriff's Office is never involved in a situation where a large amount of citizens demand camera, body camera video, and we can't provide it. We are also requesting funds for the purchase of a dual K nine, dual-service K nine. This K nine will replace Titan, who was retired on December third, twenty eighteen. Being short, one K nine has caused additional overtime and on-call pay. A dual-purpose K nine not only performs drug searches and criminal apprehension, but also assists in the location of missing persons such as children. The amount required, the amount requested includes training and all necessary equipment to include fencing, housing, concrete, et cetera. Funding was requested, was requested but not appropriated last fiscal year for this purpose. One of our shifts is operating without a K nine, which has caused additional overtime and on-call pay to fill this void. More importantly, it has slowed our response times to situations requiring a K nine. Quality assurance technician. Funds are being requested for a quality assurance technician for our forensic laboratory. We'll maintain, that position will maintain and administratively review all performance and documentation for conformance with the laboratory policies and ANAB accrediting standards. This position is imperative for maintaining recently acquired ANAB accreditation. Each accreditation cycle includes an initial onsite assessment followed by regular surveillance activities to assess continued compliance with the requirements. Many laboratories that receive ANAB accreditation eventually lose it, lose it due to nonconformities found during unplanned audits. The quality assurance technician will constantly review performance and documentation for conformance with both existing and new ANAB standards. My laboratory's supervision tells me it's not a matter of if, but when accreditation issues will arise without this position. Training budget. We are requesting additional funds for law enforcement training. Our current training budget is inadequate to meet the challenges of change. Insufficient training is a catalyst for lawsuits, negative publicity, and poor performance. And I'm not quite sure, but I believe that is our county commissioner, Ms. White, holding the shield as she came out to participate and, uh, understand what it is that we do. Training increases our deputies' chances of winning confrontations, giving them confidence, and can save them and their, and their departments from lawsuits. The United States Supreme Court has made it clear in multiple cases that training police personnel is a critical managerial responsibility. Studies show the rate at which law enforcement agencies are being sued for failing to train their officers has increased at a substantial rate. In these cases, the courts have held that minimum state training standards fail to meet their definition of an officer adequately trained. Our current budget is inadequate. Our recommendation is a thousand dollars per deputy or a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year. We have only requested a portion of our recommendation for physical, for the fiscal year twenty twenty. We will again request increases in the fiscal years twenty-one and twenty-two. This is a primary concern, our aging vehicle fleet. We are requesting twenty motor vehicles for fiscal year nineteen twenty. In need of a reliable veh, we are in need of a reliable vehicle replacement plan for the upcoming years. Thirty-five percent of our vehicles have over a one hundred thousand miles, and many more are very close. We are currently receiving sixty percent of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on vehicle replacement years. This is three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which equates to roughly five equipped law enforcement vehicles per year. With a hundred and ninety-three total assigned and spare vehicles for both detention and Sheriff's Office, it is going to take thirty-nine years to replace our vehicles, thirty-nine years. We recommend at least twenty vehicles per year for a complete vehicle rotation every ten years. Vehicles and body cameras are the most used tools of a deputy sheriff. Many of our vehicles have over two hundred thousand miles and some over two hundred and fifty thousand miles. These vehicles are unsafe for response to an emergency situation for both the deputy and the victim. Our fleet condition became an emergency issue in the fiscal year of twenty eighteen, requiring a large loan for the purchase of forty-three new vehicles. Without proper planning, we will be in a similar situation very soon. Major accomplishments. We now have an accredited laboratory. Forensic service units earned is ANAB accreditation. It took two point five years, it was a two point five-year process to become accredited. We will be the first and only Sheriff's Office accredited laboratory in the state of North Carolina. After two point five years of hard work, our forensic services laboratory earned ANAB accreditation, again becoming the only Sheriff's Office accredited laboratory in the state of North Carolina. I would like to, to thank several of my laboratory, thank several, thank several of our laboratory employees for this incredible achievement. They are Lieutenant Ken Ross, Sergeant Rockley Moore, forensic scientist Rachel Jansen, forensic scientist Frank Shaw, forensic scientist Nancy Gregory, and forensic scientist Chuck McClelland. Our detention center. Fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the average inmate population is twenty-four, four twenty-four. This occasionally spikes over. Functional capacity is evident, currently housing, or currently operating with five hundred beds. We still have E Block that has ninety-six beds that remains unopened and unfunded. We have been able to reduce our inmate population and detention center expenses through our electronic monitoring program. We have, we have an estimated savings of one point nine million dollars for the calendar year of twenty eighteen. This cost savings is a benefit of our reduced inmate population, which has decreased cost, cost for food, clothing, and medical expenses. Conditions of release are set prior to the suspect being placed on electronic monitoring. This serves as a deterrent for repeat offenses and allows deputies to take suspects who violate the program conditions straight to the detention center. Vehicle needs in our detention center. The detention center currently needs a replacement of two transport port vans due to high mileage. The potential of breakdown hundreds of miles from Pitt County creates safety risks for officers as well as inmates. These vans transport federal inmates across the state and contribute to revenues by keeping our federal inmate numbers on target and projected revenue. Van three sixty-one is a Ford with over two hundred and sixty thousand miles. Van three, three twenty-five is a Ford with over two hundred and fifty thousand miles. Van seven, two seventy-eight is a Ford with over a hundred and seventy-two thousand miles. If you will look here at our revenues from the detention center. If you'll look at our fed bed revenues, we're over seven hundred thousand dollars in revenues, and we are projected to finish with one point four million dollars. We've collected, or we have a projection of collection of twenty-seven thousand dollars for our backlog state inmates. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars is predicted from our telephone commissions. Our commissary commissions, our projection is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. For a total of revenues from our detention center, the projection is one point nine million dollars. This slide will show you the federal housing reimbursement, the fed bed reimbursement that we're bringing in and projecting. The Sheriff's Office employees receive no benefits from housing federal inmates. All other Sheriff's Offices gets to keep a portion and/or all of these funds for equipment, monetary incentives, and/or programs that benefit their employees. Our deputies and/or detention officers would also like to see benefits from their extra effort too. We have not been given extra officers to, uh, keep up with these federal inmates. We have been challenged to do more with less. There is no, um, in my opinion, there is no benefit to the Pitt County Sheriff's Office for continuing to keep fed bed inmates. Our body scanner. We purchased this asset, we purchased this with asset forfeiture money and not tax dollars. It has shown results keeping contraband outside of the premises, including large nail clippers, marijuana seeds, and synthetic drugs. This operation started on December tenth of twenty eighteen. Sharp. Sharp is an initiative that I am hoping to start within our detention center so that we can address the needs of those who have addictions, heroin addiction specifically to start off with. Sharp is the acronym for Sheriff's Heroin Addiction Recovery Program. The goal of Sharp is to help inmates in the Pitt County Detention Center recover from addiction. We believe the implementation of heroin addiction services at our detention center is an essential component in the fight against heroin, against the heroin epidemic. Studies, studies have shown these types of services substantially reduce recidivism and help participants, participants become more productive members of society. I am also requesting a Sharp program coordinator. The main duties of this role include supporting the inception and development of program, of programs within the detention facility. of programs within the detention facility and work with other care partners. Delivery of a planned model using best practices to reduce recidivism. Connecting offenders to care planning pending release. Our goals at the detention center is to continue safe and secure operations of the Pitt County Detention Center, making sure inspections are without discrepancy. We need two new vans and two new kitchen officers. Any questions?
We are unaware of any documentation where federal asset seizure funds were going to be used to match a grant to body implement, body cameras. Aside, apart from that, when the request did come before the county, there had been no collaboration with MIS regarding data storage because at the time you would have to store all of this digital data on some type of storage device. Now, the platform they're talking about now is the, the data would be stored in the cloud off-site. But back then, there was, there was no provision for data storage and to my knowledge as well, there were no policies put into place at that point as proposed as to how those body cameras would be put into place. So for those three reasons, we didn't have the money for the match, we were unaware of federal assets, seizure funds were going to be used for the match. There were, um, no policies in the data storage. Those are the reasons in the past. On fed beds, I just want to make a comparison between the detention center and solid waste. You might say, well, why would you compare those two? Solid waste is an enterprise fund that basically has to balance its budget, its revenues have to meet its expenditures. If we treat, if we created the, if we treated the detention center as an enterprise fund that of a $15 million operation that it is today, the sheriff showed that it brings in about $2 million in revenue. Thus, we would have an enterprise fund with a $13 million deficit. Thus, it's not enterprise fund, it's a department of county government that is supported by the adblock tax rate and other revenues. The sheriff talked about there's, there's no value or benefit in the fed beds. For the new board members, we used to house, house our budget for 70 federal inmates and that was worth about $2 million of revenue. The board of commissioners made a decision to lower that to 35 because we were too dependent on those monies. And technically, the sheriff is right, ultimately, we, the board and staff discussed at some point, maybe we should just do away with all fed beds because we might need that space for local inmates. Well, that hasn't come to fruition yet. As the sheriff pointed out, we still have E Block, this 96-bed unit available at some point in time if the inmate population demands get to the point where we need it. But my point, my main point being that if, if we do away with the remaining 35, um, federal inmate beds, there's a million, there's another million dollar hole we have in that operation of revenue that is being counted on to, to go against a $15 million operation that technically if it was enterprise fund, has a $13 million deficit. Also, I just want to point out in the big picture, between the sheriff's office and detention center, the sheriff has asked for 4.4 million dollars in new monies, above and beyond what is budgeted this year. In my opinion, um, this budget appropriates, proposes to appropriate 1.8 million dollars of 4.4 in expansion. If there's, I hate to use the terminology of winners or losers, but if there's winners or losers in the general fund in terms of recommended preparations, sheriff and detention is a winner. May not be getting everything that they, the sheriff needs and is requesting, but they are getting a lion's share of what is being proposed in the expansion. And if you did, if the sheriff did want to give up fed beds, my recommendation would, would be then we've got to find a million dollars in cuts in either the sheriff's office and detention center, or the board would have to find another million dollars and every penny on the tax rate is 1.3 million, so you're talking about three-fourths of a penny on the tax rate would be the consequence of that. So, thank you.
Okay. Questions, yes?
If I just follow, follow up on that, if we're treating it like an enterprise fund?
And we're not, but I'm just.
No, no, I'm just, just continuing the analysis. If we're looking and, and the, and the board feels strongly that we need to have body cameras, if we were to add fed beds and that adds to cutting into what would be the deficit because we're having the revenue, would that help us be able to, the sheriff to be able to launch that program without us having to, to increase our, I guess, asset of the general fund?
Depending on the background, what appears to put us on hold to reduce that number of dependency upon the fed beds. Now, I have told the sheriff, both Sheriff Dance and Sheriff Elks, that in terms of the revenue target, if we've got a million dollars in, in revenues we're expecting this year for fed beds, I think we're expecting just to meet that target, right? Is it about a million?
We have 996,000 budgeted this year. And as of today, we're over a million dollars in deficit of budget. If I can jump in and answer your question. From a, from a budget standpoint, if you were to increase the number of inmates, you could theoretically increase the number, you know, of revenue you expect to bring in. But from a budget standpoint, you would, you would thus be also increasing what you can spend and you'd be adding that expense on for future years. Now, from an internal policy standpoint, we have set that budget at 996K and then monies above and beyond that, we have in the past come back to you all as a board and said, can we, can we appropriate that additional revenue to balance and expenses?
Right, and we've always said with the, with Sheriff Elks or Sheriff Dance, if you collect more than the 996, we've used the excess monies to place the HVAC, you know, the detention center for detention center purposes. We've never said, hey, we've got excess, excess fed bed revenue, let's take it and buy something outside of detention or sheriff needs. We've always, we've always concurred the recommendation of the sheriff's office to use excess, excess fed bed revenue for any needs that might be needed within the detention center. And we, I've committed that to the sheriff this year, that if we can get, if we can collect more revenue than, than the target is, she'd have my recommendation to come before you for, we still have a bank of HVAC replacement needs. I think we funded a three years, a three-year strategy to replace all the rooftop HVAC needs in the old portion of the detention center that's 25 years old. We've done year, we've done year one, year two, and we're hoping to do year three this year, but there's, has not been enough excess fed bed revenues to pay for it. So that's kind of on hold per se.
Well, if I can, I guess a couple of questions. Should we wait and go around and see what the questions are from the commissioners?
I'll write them down, I don't want to lose that.
And just keep up and, and kind of listen to some of those questions. Thank you. And what we'll do is kind of go around, if that's okay with everyone, which we've done in the past. Alex, you have a question or a comment? Okay. Ms. Perkins-Williams, do you have a question or a comment?
I'm sorry, Ms. Chair, I turned it off, but somehow I saw one problem, paid it another. I wish, wish it had one to work, when I wanted to work.
Questions or comments? Do you have a question or a comment?
Other than the questions that I've already proposed. In my second term, in my first term, I heard the discussion with Sheriff Elks about vehicles. And in this term, I'm hearing this discussion or implications about vehicles. And then in Sheriff Elks' presentation, it was, we want to follow the vehicle calendar rotation. And of course, in my first term, I didn't understand it and I didn't do much questioning on it. But I understand that a certain period of time, the sheriff's office get rotated vehicle. I think one time the sheriff didn't show and we had some person from his department to represent, but still, I heard that this office says that there was a sheriff vehicle rotation. And it seems as if they all come up with the, the information that we, I don't know, see, I don't know whether we are following the rotation or not. So that was a question and I don't have my, not my full information. It was something else I brought up on the Sheriff Elks thing that I.
While you're looking for that, can we get my answer to the question on the rotation? Because I know that that was voted on a while back.
Well, I mean, we, the county has a loan policy where we go out for a vehicle purchase, like this year will be a vehicle purchase, a loan of 650,000 plus I think there's money for DSS on, on top of that because they get 50% back through federal participation. But through that, normally about, is it, how many vehicles total?
It's going to vary depending on the type of vehicle you have. Typically, the sheriff's department has got 60% over that loan amount.
For replacement vehicles, which.
Is that every two years or so?
It's two years of, you have, you have two consecutive years of going on borrowing money. One, you do it over a third year, you do it over cash year, the amounts on you, you get, we have increases up to 150,000 with cash a year. Now, with the sheriff's office, depending on which type of vehicle you get, will determine the number of vehicles that you get.
What's kind of an average that's been in the past for the new vehicles? I mean, are we talking about 10, one, five?
With, with what we're appropriated this year, it's going to be about 10 vehicles. If we get the cheapest.
Okay, but it could be 10 vehicles. Okay, so I just real, I just wanted the newer commissioners to understand that this had been put in the place on a rotating basis because it had not been done in the past. It was just kind of helter-skelter, so.
And, and I would say to keep up with, and the sheriff is right in terms of vehicle needs for sheriff's, sheriff's office, I don't disagree with you one bit. But I will say that under the constraints of a tax rate structure that we have had in the past, we haven't been able, I mean, this is one good example of having a 69.6 cent, cent tax rate. We can't meet all of the, the demands that are needed within general fund budget and keep the tax rate the way it is. And to me, I think we've kind of held the, the, it's a pressure cooker, that the pressure, the pressure down on this and all of a sudden, it's just starting to, this year, it's, it's popping per se. Even though with this proposed tax increase, you're not even getting the vehicles that you feel you need. You're getting some, but, so, thank you.
Before I came to this board, I heard that my district was one of the most high crime population areas in the county. And I worked hard with the citizens to change that. And the sheriff's department has been good to provide information that before you now, Ms., uh, trying to call your name right. Sheriff, okay, thank you, Ms. Dance, uh, to change that idea and so that we can participate as much as we can to make that effort go away through other areas in the county. So the crime watch thing has been going on and I said to the, the citizens, please keep that crime watch. Whatever we do, let that be an addition to the crime watch. And I, I'd like to thank you, Neil Elks and Sheriff Dance, well, y'all, for the support that you give us for the community crime watch because crime is not going to go away as man can and won't. And the statistics, I've requested statistics one time, but I didn't get it the same way the second time so that I won't know, you know, the difference in thereof. So I have to rely on you for that. So I, I like to, the progress that you made and with some of that, under Neil Elks's, Sheriff Elks, I'm trying to put these titles right, under Neil Elks's administration, I did an impromptu visit to the, the jail facility because I'd never seen it, never been out there. And the staff was real nice to me and everything because it was sort of like impromptu and they escorted me around and we talked about. And I've used, and I ask my questions on stop, because I get answered and that makes me move on. And I thank you for that. But, and then this time, you created a tour for us and I saw that new checkpoint, Charlie's is my, I don't know what it is, but it's the thing that does like that. And I thought that was progress that protects citizens as well as, and, and the deputies, they need to be protected too because they need to go home to their families. I'm a family person. But what bothers, wait, you got the concealed change. What bothers me is, I have a question here since I got asked all my questions, I wrote them on my paper. How many, and I still want the answers for my other questions, I didn't write them down. How many, uh, I don't know what you call them, oh, canines, that's it. Dogs do you have? And, uh, certain dogs do certain, that was something that your tour didn't provide nor did Neil's tour provide. But I seen the dogs and I know dogs can sniff out stuff that, my son has a dog. But anyway, how many dogs do you have and for a population this size and growing? And if someday I can get the real estate dollars for houses bits and stuff and for county growth, then I can make a better determination for that. How many dogs, uh, it is necessary?
Okay. Just to make sure I know when to answer. Um, yeah, I understand. Oh, I understand. I certainly understand.
But I think you could just give us a number and we can move on.
Well, you are the veteran here and you are the chairman and I'm going to move in your direction.
For sure.
Yes, we have, currently, we have three canine. Our, our norm is to have four canine, one per unit. Since we, we retired one canine, we've been left with just three. So we've had to have call out and overtime paying for the lack of that particular animal.
That requires special training for the deputy.
Yes, ma'am, that requires special training for the deputy, for the, for the canine itself. And those canines are able to do article searches, sniff drugs, search for missing people.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to move on so I won't take it up long because, see, with the area that's high in crime, this has got to be pointed out because I've had a very strong resident to question me about E Block. And that's what prompted my impromptu visit at Neil. And I requested that they take me to the empty block sale because somebody, and I never knew that we had empty section. So that's what did that under Neil, I don't think Neil reminded me calling him Neil. So with that thing, so, and I learned something from that. With the federal stuff, that presentation on page 11, I saw Mills on Wheels in here. That's something that is provided by Middle East, is that right?
The Pitt County Council made some contracts with the sheriff's office via Aramark who is the kitchen contractor that does the mills for the detention center. We, the county gets revenue, sheriff's office, county gets revenue off that, 14,400 for the privilege of having Aramark prepare the mills and wheels with the Pitt County Council and Agent through their volunteers and then distribute through the community.
Well, see, that's another block because I've only seen it in, you counted an agent in Mills on Wheels with Middle East. I didn't, I haven't seen it with the sheriff's department equation and so, thank you. See, when you're new and everybody else is old, you don't get the same kind of open That's it, so I wait for my other answers.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Nunley?
Thank you for coming, Sheriff Dance.
Thank you.
Wanted to, I had two questions. The first has to do with body cameras. Does your office currently, are you currently, do you have on the docket, I guess, some target grant programs that you're eyeing in the event that the commission can come together and work out a plan to, to fund, to fund acquiring such a program in the county?
As I stated again, under Sheriff Elks' tenure, there was a grant that was identified. We applied for it and, and we didn't get, anyway, it didn't work out. We, there are grants that we possibly could, could, could look for, yes, it's possibly that we could look for, but there's no guarantee. That particular grant that we got, no longer is applicable to us because they've gone to smaller, they were only, I don't think they're fun officers or offices over 70. or offices over seventy-five officers. So we are no longer able to get that particular grant. As in grants, there's no guarantee that we can get them. We certainly will do our part and be team players and look for additional funding to get body cameras.
Well, I think, well, just, I know that Commissioner Fitzpatrick and I both have practiced law, and I'm a recovering attorney. But do feel strongly that, you know, as a, in public safety, it's really, really important to have body cameras. But I think this is a really illustrative fact, and I think our manager pointed it out, that we're approaching a place in our county where our tax rate is, and I say tax rate loosely, our tax rate is failing to meet the needs of some of our departments. And when we look at, when we look at body cameras, I think we need, it's a unique exercise to see that what, when we talk about tax here at the local level, we're really talking about a community investment in resources that are necessary to provide safety, education protections for our citizens. And so that tax conversation that gets thrown around loosely here, I just think that it's really important that we keep in mind that this is not the same debate that we have at the state or federal level about where our tax dollars are going. This is a direct community investment in what's being requested. And so that I hope that we have that mindset moving forward, and that your offices, when these proposals come up, that you are mindful that this is a direct community investment, and that you're able to hopefully identify some grants and to help, help the community minimize that expenditure.
Yes, sir, I am definitely open to applying for grants to offset this cost for the body cameras. That is certainly not an issue that, or something that we would not, not just do. We need body cameras by any means necessary.
Thank you, Abby.
Um, just, um, along with Chris, I agree that I hope that you will look for grants to get the body cameras. I went to the, uh, went to hear the city police, Gringle Police Program last week. And I believe that all of them have the cameras. So that was, that kind of struck me, hey, you know, oh, they got body cameras. So I, I hope that you will pursue that. I want to commend you on your major accomplishments. I do have a couple of questions on some things. Should you not get the increase that you're asking for? How will you function? And I'm talking there about a couple of things, your quality assurance technician, is that a new position or additional position? So should you not get that position, how will you perform?
That is a new position that I am requesting. That is a need that we have to have, since our laboratory has now become accredited, a part of that accreditation. It's, yeah, that's in, that's one that he recommended.
Okay, and the additional monies for training.
Yes, nationally, I believe it is usually about a thousand dollars per officer for training on a national level. With the training that we've been allocated in the past, it equals out to about, I refer to forty, fifty dollars an officer, I believe. And that may not be an accurate number. But we certainly need those funds to make sure that our officers are safe and trained in a way that they can stay safe and keep the citizens safe of Pitt County. So we certainly have requested monies for that. As I looked at that, Gringle's budget is around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for training for their officers. And I'm not even asking that, I'm asking to gradually move in that direction. Our officers at Pitt County Detention Center are just as important as any officer in the state of North Carolina or in the United States. And we believe and trust in our officers and want them to have the best training that will keep them safe as well. So that is why I am asking for an increase in the budget. And Mr. Elliott did give me somewhat of an increase, but he decreased me in another line.
For her training request, she's fully funded for every dollar she asked for. And I posed the question to Sheriff Dance in our budget meetings that we had with her. I said, in terms of if we had a school safety need, i.e. school, I'm just going to call it school safety need, I don't want to use any more words than that, that we had to respond to, do you have everything you need per se? In the one area that their sheriff said, our folks, we need all the training dollars. I said, you got it. What you asked for, fully funded that line item. Most of the departments, we cut training as an area, just trying to shave and carve the budget. So I am proud to say that in partnership with the sheriff, at least in that one line item. I realize there's other line items we cut, and that those could affect overall operations as well, but at least training, we did fully fund.
Is that it, Ms. Higgins? Okay, Mr. McLaughlin?
In reference to the body camera, piggybacking on Commissioner Nunley remarks, you know, I think, do you have any body cameras at all at the sheriff's department?
We have no body cameras. The only body cameras that we have, we are now using to, as demonstrations for when we move forward for body cameras. No, sir, we do not have body cameras. We do not have in-car cameras. We do not have a way to defend ourselves when people in the city or in the county say that things happened. We have no way to defend ourselves. That, it may have been years ago, and I've been here some years, but I've never had one when I was a patrol officer.
We used to.
But, you know, my comment on that is that, you know, I think this is something that, you know, we need to really be concerned about in terms of the sheriff's department's, Scott, I don't know whether, you know, we talked about grant money, and if that, if that can be, I think that that's a project that we need to look, because it's just a suit waiting to happen. Nationally speaking, you know, you listen to national news, and the body cameras has proven to be an asset to saving monies from the counties and city government and things of this nature. So I think that's one avenue that I'm kind of concerned about, to sort of, we can get this body camera activated. And if we can look into something, that we may find some type of funding, I don't know whether. In doing some things like that, Sheriff, you probably already know that some things may have to be, you know, cut, or, I'm not going to say eliminated. But I think that, you know, that is one area that I'm very concerned about, is about body cameras. The vehicles that you're talking about, the rotation schedule of your vehicles, Scott, maybe you can tell me about that. How's that going? Going, is that, we talked about that in the commissioners meeting on previous budget, that we'll have the car rotation after it hits so many thousands of miles, over a hundred thousand miles. And I think she mentioned something about two hundred thousand miles on some, over a hundred something thousand miles. Why is that going?
Well, you know, I think it was two years ago, we worked with the sheriff's office and replaced, I think, you said, forty-two, forty, forty-three vehicles, based upon, we reduced their maintenance line item, thinking that if we did a large million-dollar package of purchase of vehicles, that we tried to jumpstart them in terms of a program. We are, we're not meeting a standard in terms of when a car hits two hundred thousand miles or whatnot. Again, I don't, there's not an adequate tax rate established to do that. That's an analysis we could bring back to you to tell you what it would take per year, and if we just committed to upping the six fifty to some adequate amount to, maybe we have to double, was it twenty cars per year you said that would keep you on track?
I believe twenty cars a year would be a start.
So doubling the amount that we're currently doing into sixty percent allocation. So sixty percent of six hundred and fifty thousand, what's the math on that? Three hundred and sixty thousand would be an annual increase of three hundred and sixty thousand on top of the six fifty, to give them twenty cars a year. But keep in mind that it's a two-year cycle, that we do a loan package for three years, a loan package for three years. Then it's a pay-as-you-go, and there's about a hundred thousandish in there that we do as pay-as-you-go.
Okay, and I'll just remind the commissioners, some of the questions you're asking now, they will come back with some of the answers tomorrow or some projection, you know, when we come back. So, Mr. McLaughlin, is that it?
Well, can I be fair to the people on that phone? Two years ago, we did a large loan for sheriff vehicles, and we replaced, which vehicles that we did not replace, those continue to be in use. So even though the new cars reduce some of the maintenance costs, the older vehicles are still on the road. So that's been a concern that we have had, in my office and sheriff's business office, is trying to make sure that we can keep cars that are older, that are still in use all the way. Is there kind of a plan in place for the older vehicles that are being used, that maybe those kind of transition into? Best way to put this, lower stress positions within the sheriff's department, maybe serving papers or doing things that wouldn't have as much stress or strain on the vehicles?
Well, you have to remember that when you're talking about lower stress positions, when you are a sworn officer, you are a sworn officer, and some of our civil people might be in a position that they need to get to a call as well, if all of our patrol division is tied up. So everyone, from the sheriff being me, to my chief deputies, to everyone, is susceptible to getting to a call as quick as we can, and as efficiently and as safely as we can. So any vehicle in any division would need to be up to par, because at any given time, we have to answer those calls.
Mr. Colson?
Sheriff Dance, do you plan to work with, fully and globally with all state and federal agencies, including us?
I am not a part of the two eighty-seven G, but we do, and I have no plans to be a part of the two eighty-seven G, but we do recognize the detainers, and we do abide by those standards that are set in place. We do contact ICE if we have one here that is of an illegal status, and they have forty-eight hours to come and get them.
What happens if they don't get them in forty-eight hours?
There's never been a situation that that has happened, so I can't answer that.
What introspect for me, supposing it did happen, what would you do?
Well, I am going to continue to abide by the rules of ICE, or as it pertains to the detainers. And hopefully, the, I won't be put in that situation. I cannot tell you what I will do without that, without that situation in front of me. I would be remiss.
Total support.
Sir.
I said you have my complete total support.
Thank you, sir.
Another question.
I have a, I guess, kind of a question for the sheriff. With the available other thirty-seven or thirty-five positions for federal inmates, do we know how much space is available without having to open E Block to where we could accommodate those? And if we are able to take on additional federal inmates, with the understanding that that increase in money would go back to the sheriff's department? Is that something that would be feasible to do?
I would recommend, I can answer first, that keep the projection of thirty-five inmates in this year's budget. Wait six months, see what they can do to overcollect. Then after six months, if the sheriff's office has overcollected, has actually booked more than thirty-five inmates, on average, and say they do the fifty, fifty-five, whatever it would take to get you up to half a million dollars, then come back at that point in time, make the decision as to whether that's what the sheriff is asking for, which I would assume would be your top priority for that, for that purpose, whether to implement or not. Just keep in mind, the five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, I think roughly ninety thousand of that, plus or minus, is the actual cost of the cameras. The balance of that money, correct me if I'm wrong, Ernest, is the actual data storage and related data management costs. And one, one thing I've questioned through the process is, do we, will we need, will the sheriff's office eventually ask for an additional, an additional position on the ground to manage this data? Because once the body cameras go on all the officers and it's filming, and then people start making requests for that filming, who is going to manage pulling that data out of the cloud per se, getting it to the courts, the attorneys, whoever legally can obtain it? Right now, there's, there's no staff position identified new. Maybe there's an existing staff position the sheriff would have to do that, but that's one thing, one element that I feel is currently under addressed in the program. The sheriff may have a plan for that, I don't know.
To go back to your question, yes, there is room for additional fed bed or federal inmates. Again, I have not received additional help, detention officers, to staff. So we're doing more with less, as it stands. Our, our projection on thirty-five inmates, we have surpassed that. And we'll, by the end of the year, have another half a million dollars that we would have made off of the overages of inmates that I have kept in that detention center. And that was done with the hope that we would get body cameras, or we would get some things that we need in the detention center. Charlotte Mecklenburg County, Wake County, and many of the other counties that house federal inmates, keeps their money. Their commensary, their fed bed money comes back to them, and they are able to use it to purchase things for their office. Again, I am okay with being, I want to be a team player. I am a Pitt County resident, I am a stakeholder in this community, and I want to be a team player. The office of the sheriff was never meant to be a revenue-based entity in the first place. And our bills were getting paid before the fed bed inmates came in. And I suspect when people pay their taxes, our bills are going to continue to get paid, whether we have the fed beds or not.
I can add to, keep in mind that with, with E Block being, that if we increase our fed bed count higher than the thirty-five on the average per day to fifty, what it might be, it gets to the point where, oh my gosh, because of the local limit and population's increase, plus we have all these additional fed beds, and we have to open E Block, and the cost to open E Block was about eight or nine hundred thousand dollars, because you hire three shifts a day, twenty-four seven operation. All the money we just thought, the extra money we thought we had in fed beds, we now have nine hundred thousand dollars in personnel costs to hire up the amount of people needed to open E Block. So we don't want to push the envelope to the extent where a year from now, the sheriff is coming and saying, wherever populated, it's dangerous conditions for our detention officers. That's, that was part of our goal, of reducing that number of fed beds, so we could keep a manageable number of local inmates in the detention center without having to incur that cost of opening E Block and paying all those personnel costs.
I guess my word would be, wants it also to expand the federal inmate population, understanding that obviously more detention officers, staff, everything would be required. What would be the rejected excess available to reallocate to the sheriff's department?
Based upon the numbers, right now, we get seventy-eight dollars per day per federal inmate, so that's-
You need to set the numbers that you, to create the revenue, to account for, like, if you're going to get the money. And the end goal is to set that number.
And keep in mind that the federal magistrate, who I think we, is it magistrate that we work with, the federal, marshal, I'm sorry, marshal, we've had a good relationship in the past, but for some reason, the federal marshal would say, I think we'll start taking this federal- taking these federal prisoners and putting them over here and over there and not in Pitt County, there's nothing we can do about it. We've been fortunate that we have met our revenue targets, and we're also fortunate because the sheriff runs such a well-run detention center and her staff, and that we have, you're seeing this budget, I think it's a two-point-one million dollar jail health program, which is that amount of money for a public jail detention center is really unheard of in the state. But the positive of that is the number of lawsuits we have coming out of the detention center for health-based need reasons is minimal. Not saying we haven't had any or won't have any, but there are very few compared to others that do a very minimal jail health program.
It's one of the proactive things that we do, you know, one of many.
Commend the sheriff for that.
Right.
I think, as someone who practices quite a bit in federal court, I think there is a need for having housing in eastern North Carolina for federal inmates. You know, I traveled to Farmville, Virginia to see clients, Bayboro, Wilmington, Brunswick County, different areas, and if this program is available and can bring revenue back to not only Pitt County, but in turn back to the sheriff's department, I certainly would like to see everything, you know, that we could do to make that happen, especially with hopefully implementing the pre-trial services report or program which may decrease other state jail population to where there would be space available for federal inmates, also creating income.
Again, sheriff's a team player.
Sure.
I'd like to, I'd like being on the team.
But when we go above and beyond, as we've done in the past year since we've had fed inmate, fed bed inmates, you know, there is some expectation that we get something in return and...
I think the understanding would be that that money would come back, would be my hope. I guess, not really as much a question, but would like to see some more information, projected possibilities.
That money has gone back, and we look at it from a month-to-month standpoint. We do an analysis in the finance department from two thousand and fourteen on each month, seeing where all of our revenues fall, not just fed bed in comparison to prior years. And in the prior years, at this point in the year, we have been farther ahead, so we have started those conversations to look at additional spending for the sheriff's department. This year, that amount is not as far ahead that I am comfortable with executing an expense without having realized the actual money. So increasing the budget on a revenue is a little more difficult than on an expense because if that revenue does not fall into place, I have an expense on the books that theoretically July first, the sheriff's office can go execute or any department. Then if I don't have that revenue on the books from a budget standpoint, then I have to pull that revenue from somewhere else, and that's for all departments, not just the sheriff's office.
Also, the sheriff hasn't mentioned this, but through her corrective means to renegotiate the fed bed rate with the federal government, I don't know if you want to provide an update on that, where we stand, that's kind of good news.
I believe that they are in, Janice might speak to this a little better, but I know that they are in negotiations now to get that fed bed rate. I believe we're hoping somewhere around a hundred and three dollars per inmate, which is a significant increase from the seventy-eight dollars that we...
So just even based on the thirty-five inmates going from seventy-eight dollars to, whether it's the hundred and three or maybe it's in the nineties, maybe it's, maybe when the feds negotiate, they'll go to midpoint or something. I think we calculated even just on thirty-five inmates, it would be how much per year?
We ran an analysis just on the ninety-dollar increase from seventy-eight to ninety, and it was almost two hundred thousand dollars more. Unfortunately, I don't think the timing of that announcement allows me, in a professional standpoint, to put that in the budget.
So that's not in the revenue projection for the budget?
Right.
So right now, even July one, if we find out, that might be two hundred right there of the five forty-four, and then we can do an analysis on, does it take three, five, ten, fifteen additional fed federal inmates to come up to the five forty-four? So we can run that for you and bring it back.
Can I say my words first? Go ahead, I mean, you can go ahead and then I'll finish up, go ahead.
Just to talk about the federal inmates again, I understand that Sheriff Elsman, he was here and of course, you now, the reason that we were able to get a lot of federal inmates was because of the relationship that you all established with the federal government, and that was very positive as compared to a lot of other cities and towns and municipalities. So I think that, listening to Commissioner Fitzpatrick talk, I think that's, it sounds like it's advantageous to keep those federal government, federal...
Yes, it certainly is.
The advantage that we have is the relationship that we have with the marshal service. And also, just as advantageous is the way in which, or the professionalism in which our jail is run. The marshal service loves our detention center, everything about it. It is running in such a way that they have no hesitations or issues with sending those inmates here to Pitt County. It's not going to be a problem getting federal inmates. The problem is having the staff to do it secondarily. You know, the sheriff's office meets goals to be a part of bringing in that revenue, and when we go over, I feel that I'm not even asking for it all, like Mecklenburg and Wake County. I'm asking for everything over to come back because it's not in the projected budget anyway. It's not there anyway. It's money that wouldn't be missed because you never even planned on it. But we cannot continue and will not continue to do more with less and then get nothing from it.
You had something?
I did a question at the beginning as it related to, and I try to listen very attentively, and perhaps my vocal projection is very strong on this board and is loud, that's come from other things, but my district is, drills me, questions me, and places a lot on it. Yes, we do pick up the trash. You all know that was, that's one of my pet peeves, and I'm not going to talk about it, Tom, I'm not going to talk about the trash. But it sends that message that we care, the simple thing of picking up the trash. It tells me that we care about where we live because it looks better. And yes, Mr. Demery does an excellent job. I mean, we talk about things too, but there, I want to tell you about a situation that happened, it's going to be short too, it ain't going to be a long sermon like I have done. There was a situation that came up in my district. I think it was soon after election. She was more than seventy, and something happened in her front yard. And she called me, what'd I do, what'd I do, that's the kind of calls I get. And I said, you follow procedure, you call nine-one-one as any other deputy would do, I don't care, we do have a female sheriff now, we call nine-one-one. And they would dispatch the appropriate person to your home about your concern, and this happened. But in the process, even though the other resident was out of row, and this is a serious matter, because some of them had said, oh, this is a stand-your-ground law, and I can take my gun out and shoot you. I said, we don't have to do that over here, we're better than that. So she said, the deputy came out, and in the process, the deputy told her, now she was a property owner, you need to move. And the person was there who was not the property owner, and that deputy, now that comment infuriated me. She has spent her life and money on her property, and she wanted to maintain at a standard that we're trying to raise our bar as for how it looks. You know, I told her to file a com, am I telling you the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
I told her to file a complaint with your department through proper standards, and they sent some of your other guys out, and anyway, it found out that this person, even though she was highly upset, we calmed, the sheriff calmed that matter out, but a simple body camera ruled a help with that situation. But to tell the taxpayer to move, and the person didn't own a stitch of anything in Pitt County, was digging up her yard, in the front yard, and she was handicapped and got to have assistance to walk. So it bothers me that that deputy did that, and I say you file a complaint through the sheriff's department, as any other citizen would do. We would do that if Neil is there, and just because she's a female, don't think, no special attention. We follow standard procedure. And then I called her and asked her about it because I knew I'd hear it again. So you are hearing it again too because it's necessary here, and I want the citizen to feel competent, and I want the deputies to go home at night to their babies and pay for their babies and everything. So it takes both, all of us being safe in this situation that you head up, because if you make a mistake, oh, my finger is pointing, I didn't mean to, I'll be on you. You don't think that, and the citizen, and I'll tell them to follow standard procedure, but I expect the deputies to follow their protocol and how they're supposed to do it, and tell me when I'm wrong. I don't know about law, so I have to write my little notes on him, ask my other question that I didn't ask, you know what I mean?
Yes, ma'am.
So I want, the tax manager, if he's in here, I bet you I'm the only commissioner who's last to pay their taxes. I hate them. I hate taxes. I've paid taxes all my life on my property. Floyd came along, and the rest of y'all, they ain't been on the board, they done heard this. I got nothing for all those investments of my tax dollars. So yes, I hate them, but I'll pay a penny. So that's a sacrifice for me. I, and I am on fixed income and didn't make that kind of money at East Carolina Universities when I was working, but I've endured through the community, we have come together and we're trying to work together. So I want us to do that too, but I don't want to cut you short, and I don't want to make you look bad, and I don't want to make you look bad and anybody else. But when I have a statement I want to make, I want to make it. Tom had endured a lot, and I pinched him a time too without him being pinched. So you know what I'm saying, force can pinch you. So thank you, Madam Chairman, and the question was, how many counties in the east, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on that, y'all. How many county, we're going to be the best, we got to be the best, and stop having it on paper. How many counties in the east got body cameras? No, not cameras, not cameras in the east, how many counties? I was trying to say counties, and my Cs got messed up. In the east, have body cameras, none in Pitt County, and we the best now.
Yes, ma'am. I don't have that in front of me, but I can tell you certainly all the largest agencies have them, and Pitt County is the fourteenth-largest county in this state, and there are counties that are much smaller. Martin County has them, my home county, Martin County has them.
What's your home county?
Martin County.
Jesus.
That's where I was born and raised. And all of the surrounding counties have those cameras.
Would you get that information for sheriff?
I certainly will.
For the county manager?
I certainly...
Because that is an important...
Well, by the mere virtue of us being the fourteenth-largest...
I want to endure this, boy, because I can't get along with it. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. I'm not going to speak to any of these things down here. All I want to say is a reminder to all commissioners and to everyone else that we've already heard some comments about the tax increase on this budget, and we've all had an opportunity to kind of start looking at what's coming down the pike, and I haven't heard anything here from you all that would not show that that's going to probably be a necessity, I just don't know how much, and I don't think any of us do. Thank you so much for your presentation. We respect the job that you do and respect you, and we welcome you to the county. I don't think we've done that officially as our lead law enforcement officer. And congratulations to your three, I think that were promoted to supervise those three areas, correct? Divisions? And...
They are here, if we would like to recognize them.
Okay, raise your hands.
Chief Gentry is in charge, is the chief in charge of our administrative division, Chief Congleton is in charge of the investigative division, Chief Guard is in charge of my patrol division.
And salary increases?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. With that said, do you all kind of have your, usually, excuse me?
I think I had an, you told you, we're going to give me an opportunity to address a couple of things that I'd like to do, and I'll be very quick. We talked about the body cams, which is, again, I think you all know that's a big priority for me, and in conferring with my financial person here, we can go after the grants, but we cannot do it without an appropriation from the county to do a match. Those grants require a fifty-fifty match, but we cannot do it without an appropriation from the county on making that match. The... What did we figure in the budget? To include the storage? Five hundred and forty-four thousand to include the storage?
With the grant, will it be on the actual purchase of the cameras or the purchase and the data storage?
But you're saying there's a grant out there, are grants out there that would cover that five hundred and forty-four?
Yes, sir.
Divided by two?
Right, a commitment. And secondarily, again, I want to talk about that SHARP program really quick. As stakeholders in our community, we, as law enforcement officers, we're going to enforce the law. That is what we do, but it does not mean that we do it without having some compassion for what's happening in our community. And what is happening in our community right now is a heroin problem, and we're having people die every day. And so we've been fighting the war on drugs for the last fifty, sixty years, and we haven't won, so maybe we ought to start looking at giving resources or offering resources for recovery so that these people can become productive, tax-paying citizens in our community, and trying to offer those resources that will reintegrate them to a drug-free life. We ought to be able to do that as a citizen, as a law enforcement agency, so that we are well-rounded in addressing all the issues of that. Cars is a very big issue for me. Cars are our number-one tool that we use. We use it more than our guns, thank God, we use it more than our tasers, we use it more than any other tool that we have as a deputy sheriff, and we've got to have them. I'm not going to send deputies out on bicycles, I can't send them out running, I can't send them out walking to a call. If we don't have cars, we can't get to those calls, and the citizens are not getting what they're paying for in their taxes. So I ask that you do please consider the issues of cars. Again, just to quickly reiterate on the allied health services, please remember, as sheriff, I am only responsible for the security of the courtroom. That is something extra that we do, but having that allied services in my budget only inflates my budget and make it look like I'm getting more for a service that I'm not even required to do, along with the cameras. That's in my budget, and it shouldn't be. That is the courthouse. I'm not responsible for the courthouse, I'm responsible for those courtrooms. But we do that, and I feel that we deserve to get some things that we need when we go above and beyond what is not even expected of us to do. So I thank you for your time. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That's the best. True.
Yes.
...position to be funded. However, the county does make appropriation to Trillium Health Resources, about 487,500 a year. We're proposing to you, the board, that we ask Trillium to carve out the money needed to fund that position out of our contribution to them, like we've done in some different areas, so hopefully we can accomplish the sheriffs.
And if I can quickly address that, I'm not, I, I am, um, in doing it that way, Trillium has oversight over that program and I am not willing for Trillium to have oversight over a program that we have started, um, in trying to address that issue. Um, they may not conform with some of the policies that we have in our detention center. And I don't want them to have that oversight.
Do you all have as much information as you need to bring anything back to us? Okay. Um, let's take a break for sure. Uh, 10 minutes?
Next, we have a presentation from Pitt County's interim emergency management director, Jim MacArthur, and this will be about the emergency management budget composed of EMS, fire, and basically communications, operations.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm happy to be here this morning. Uh, as Scott said, I'm Jim MacArthur, serving as interim director. Um, we start off every presentation that we do with this and you heard me talk a little bit about it, as you heard Alan, uh, those of you that were here when Alan Everett was here with us. We really believe this, we, we work this into everything we do. You guys are a part of this, you've always been very supportive of what we do as long as I've been here. Uh, emergency management is all encompassing, is a highly visible part of Pitt County government and what we do. Um, and so we really appreciate your support, your continued support in being aware of what all is going on down here. So as we get started, emergency management consists of four parts, as we started with. Um, we're four divisions in here, under one department. Uh, we do act as liaison between other county departments and county staff, municipalities, other county organizations, community-based organizations. Um, we really work with everybody in the community, public and private, to get where we need to be from an emergency response and preparedness perspective, but also hazard mitigation and resilience in our community as we look towards disaster season, you know, hurricanes, tornadoes, severe weather primarily, but also other, uh, possible significant events. So, as we alluded to a minute ago, we are four divisions. We have the fire division, which consists of our fire marshal's office and our volunteer fire departments, EMS, uh, emergency medical services, 911 communications, and emergency planning. So our fire division, we'll start with that. Uh, we actually have one deputy director, fire marshal, that's Jay Mars. Uh, he's just actually completed his level three, uh, fire inspector certification, allowing him to do the full gamut of responsibilities within that department. Uh, we do use two part-time deputy fire marshals, we're down to one right now, Mr. Wayne Peeden, after one retirement, uh, last month. And these guys, they do fire investigations, fire inspections in all the non-incorporated areas and a large number of municipalities, review pre-construction plans and for code enforcement. Uh, we respond to any types of emerg, of emergencies that we're called out to and we work closely with our volunteer fire departments. Uh, the county could not right now function without our volunteer fire departments. These, these people are very important to us. Uh, they do a really good job of responding to any type of emergency they're called out to. And, uh, so we've worked very closely with them, trying to maintain those relationships, but also make sure the county gets what it needs from them and they get what they need from the county. So this year, uh, the current year that we're in, Bell Arthur Fire Department lowered their insurance rating from a seven to a five, very significant for the homeowners and property owners in the Bell Arthur community. Uh, there will be a substantial insurance saving, savings to those people moving from a seven to a five. And Winterville community was recertified by the state as 9S department, meaning that the state came in and reviewed all of their paperwork to make sure that they are compliant to continue functioning as a fire department. Um, so, and moving forward in this year, these, these departments, we actually have seven ISO ratings scheduled for this year at some point in the next six to eight months. So our fire marshal's office will be very busy with that. Um, moving forward, as was alluded to yesterday, in the budget, in the fire divisions, uh, the fire truck purchases that you guys have committed to, um, we have a number of departments that are planning on purchasing vehicles this year. And also, uh, there's three fire departments with tax increases proposed.
Jim, if we could just, before members, just let them know the third set of policy a couple of years ago, that the county purchased up to five trucks a year at $25,000. Toward the purchase of that truck, trucks are several hundred thousand dollars, aren't they?
Yes, so, uh, any truck now, um, with price increases could run from kind of a minimum around 350,000 all the way up to 1.2 million, depending on what they're buying.
So of the five that could be purchased, only three departments said we're purchasing. So we've got 75,000 in the budget for that purpose.
Um, and so those, those departments actually that are planning on vehicle purchases this year, those are Bell Arthur, Clark's Neck, and Gartnersville, uh, fire departments. And this, this, I, I hope this spreadsheet is in your packet that you can see a little better. Obviously you can't see it very well on the screen, but this is the departments that we're planning for, the ones that are highlighted, that we're looking for a, uh, so these are the truck purchases. We, Angela Brown, our planner, broke this out for me, so I could easily do it for you. So here's your tax increases that are proposed for the fire district taxes. Okay, so Blackjack Fire Department is increasing, uh, for operational costs, they have a small half a cent increase. Eastern Pines Fire Department, Commissioner Coulson, I believe you asked yesterday, uh, they actually had submitted a letter to us explaining that they, uh, will have a substantial debt service on their new station that they're building to accommodate, uh, their growth in that area. And then Winterville Rural, um, is working on additional staffing and equipment replacement costs and, uh, so they've asked for a, a small increase as well. Um, so just to highlight that for you. So we'll move on to our EMS division. Um, EMS division is something that you guys see every day out in the community, we're all over the place. Uh, one deputy director of EMS, that's myself, most of the time. We have four EMS shift supervisors, a finance officer, a grant-funded community paramedic that is extremely positive. Uh, we added the four senior paramedics, they serve as a backup and minimum staffing role to our supervisors. You guys were very supportive of that in this current budget. And the county has 12, uh, full-time paramedics. Uh, those primarily work out of our Bethlehem, Pat, Pol, Pactola stations. And then we have a large pool of part-time staffing that helps to supplement that. We also, since the county is responsible for the provision of EMS by statute, so the county has its own paid staff, we also supplement all of the other areas of the county by contracting out with nonprofit EMS stations. Uh, those are such as Eastern Pines, Winterville, Aiden, Grifton, Farmville, uh, Falkland, Bell Arthur. So we contract with these departments and they provide services, paramedic-level service just the same as the county staff do. Uh, all of the first-out ambulances in Pitt County, not including the city of Greenville, are paramedic-level ambulances when they leave the station. Every one of them has at least one paramedic on it. Um, so you don't have to worry about that. We do fund all of that, uh, by using the countywide EMS tax and transport revenue. Uh, there is no recommended change in EMS tax. Uh, the finance staff and oversight committee were able to look at that, uh, budget as presented and make all of the requests happen within the current tax rate. So we're very proud of the work that was done going into that.
Just one point of clarification, in terms of the countywide EMS tax, about 18 years ago, when the county set up the EMS tax district in Pitt County, it is a countywide tax of 4.6 for EMS services, but we have what we call the donut hole, and that being the city of Greenville opted not to have that tax be assessed within the city of Greenville. And the city provides its own EMS service via GFR, Greenville Fire and Rescue. So the revenues from that tax are collected from all of the remaining nine municipalities plus the balance of land, unincorporated land in Pitt County.
EMS has had a number of major accomplishments this year. It's been a very active year for the system in Pitt County. Uh, in January, um, Scott and others were very supportive of adding a peak time unit. Um, you may ask what that is. And so what we found in the last couple of years is that the city of Greenville was supplementing our EMS system, right? So if you think about, we have one countywide EMS system and there's a bunch of ambulances within the system. And just real briefly, what we found is that the city was having to send one of their ambulances out into the county areas kind of disproportionately. It was about six or seven to one for every call, they would come respond to help us versus how many we went to help them. So what we discussed and what we looked at was our high-volume areas, kind of Eastern Pines, Winterville, Aiden, areas where we had a large number of secondary calls. So there would always be two calls going on at the same time in that area. So what we discussed was adding a peak time unit. It's, it's seven days per week, it's, uh, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And we implemented that in January using some lapse salary dollars and things within the current county budget and, uh, experienced an immediate, uh, improvement in the level of service we're providing to folks. So our utilization of the city went down over 50%. Uh, it was actually around 70%, but as time goes on, things average out and it's, it's still well over 50%. So meaning that we've decreased the amount of times we're having to use Greenville's fire engines and their, uh, squad cars, the QRVs, the chase cars you see following the ambulances around. So we're not having to use those, we're sending county resources to those county calls. Um, and so those citizens are receiving a high level of service in, in our opinion. The senior paramedics, as I mentioned, was the second QRV. That is in service almost 100% of the time right now. We're not having to pull overtime or part-time to staff that. Um, and so that has allowed us a second layer of supervision to get an experienced, highly qualified paramedic that, uh, has, has a little more experience than our normal ambulance paramedics, uh, in the southern part of the county. Our community paramedic program, I could talk to you guys for about two hours on that and if you ever want to come down and learn a little bit about it, I would love to bend your ear as long as I could. Um, that is an overwhelming community need, non-traditional paramedic without an ambulance, proactively reaching out to people, uh, that are known repeat emergency department folks or repeat ambulance callers. We're reaching out to those folks proactively, getting them connected with services. Our paramedic is a skilled service provider, we can draw labs, do home safety checks, do all kinds of services for these folks at a low cost and it keeps them from using our ambulances for non-emergency transport. It keeps them from using the most expensive form of healthcare in America, the emergency room, over and over again. And so it benefits everybody.
Do we have another? I mean, just curious. I like, how many?
So, I do.
Always serving.
Uh, currently, um, there are 26 patients being followed right now. Um, there are seven that are highly active, meaning that she's having to see them multiple times per week. She's had seven on a watch list, meaning that they are a little bit lower on the scale, that they don't require as many services. She's graduated 26, meaning that they've been removed from the program. Uh, they've taken enough accountability for their care that they have, uh, they don't need us right now. So they've been connected with whatever services and they're doing that themselves. And then there's been 90 folks that have followed through the program at some point or another and for one reason or another, whether they moved, they died, or some other reason, they're not in the program right now. So we've touched a little over 150 patients, um, in about 10 months.
I think that's the first report we've had on that, so I just wanted you.
Yes ma'am.
Put that out. That's fabulous.
I'd like to thank Angela Brown, uh, for putting this together for me this morning. She, she put that report together for me this morning, or actually yesterday. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, and as you guys are aware, we are moving towards a vehicle location, our GPS dispatching system that we, uh, were authorized that we could acquire last month. Uh, all the stuff has been ordered, it's planned, looks to be shipping around the first of June. Um, so that will really enhance the ability to dispatch the closest and most appropriate resources, maybe not always the highest level, but we can get the most appropriate resources to the citizens the quickest. Um, and then one of the things that I'm most proud of, and I think you guys as commissioners should be most proud of, is, is how well our EMS services in the county supported, uh, response efforts during Hurricane Florence. Uh, so our county staff and, and others in the county, when Hurricane Florence came through and we started ramping up our resources, okay, we opened up a special medical needs shelter at Waterby Jones. DSS did that. We dedicated county ambulance to that facility and that was their only job, was to support the medical relief efforts at that facility. Knowing that we had the possibility of being cut off in the northern region of the county, um, we took an ambulance that we, we recalled our staff, we put an ambulance at the paramedic level in the Bellevore Fire Department to assist the National Guard units that were up there, knowing that between Falkland and Bellevore, we may not be able to serve everybody adequately. So at the same time we did all of that, we put another QRV with two paramedics in the Blackjack community to do the same thing, knowing that Gartnersville, Blackjack, Chikot area gets cut off from flooding in certain areas and that we were able to support those efforts. And our paramedics were all very supportive of that and very willing to work and it allowed them to get out of the stations and move around a little bit. And then the last thing that we did was we were asked by the state to, uh, support shelter operations. So during Florence, as you know, it was, we were very fortunate, we didn't get the worst impacts from that locally. Uh, some of the counties south and east of us got hit a lot. So what we wound up doing was, uh, we sent an ambulance to a special medical needs shelter in Chapel Hill, um, at the university there. And they treated patients for a week for 24 hours a day. Um, we rotated two crews in there, um, and they supported nursing efforts from Mississippi and Tennessee, uh, to take care of sick folks up there. And so we're really proud of that and I think you should be too. It's very visible efforts from Pitt County to support the state, so. Um, we want to highlight our, our peak time ambulance real quick, if, as I did already a little bit. We do house that unit at the Simpson Fire Station. There was a local agreement that, uh, we have a good relationship with those folks. They had some base space available, so we can keep that unit there at night. Um, primarily runs in the eastern part of the county, but it has, has literally run calls in every district of the county at some point or another. And we're not taking over any calls from any of the stations that are out there, but we're really trying to support the efforts. So, community paramedic, same as I, I, I just, I'm really, I love the community paramedic program. It's, it's something that has been a huge need in emergency services for a long time and we're just figuring out how to do it.
This is a partnership with, um, Vite Medical Center in terms of, they have to meet a certain Medicare, Medicaid ratio that if, once a patient is, is, goes home, if they come back to the hospital within a certain number of days or hours, they're then penalized on what they're paid for, the Medicare, Medicaid, whichever it is, like Medicare rate. So we are receiving funding through the Vite Medical Center Foundation to implement the community paramedic program that helps keep these patients from being re-admitted back into the hospital, which then penalizes the hospital. So it helps, helps in a lot of different ways.
It absolutely does. So, so what is, what Scott's alluding to is that, uh, when those folks come back within 30 days, the hospital cannot bill for services on CHF and COPD patients. And these are some of the highest, most expensive acute care patients, they get admitted for the longest periods of time. Um, you know, when you think about ICU stays, multiple day stays for heart failure patients, that's really expensive to the hospital. And so if we can provide some early intervention for these folks and help them to be compliant with the care that they're already receiving and coordinate the care for them, then they don't keep going back to the hospital. And so it really, there's a human element that we're providing the right thing for these folks and we're keeping them where they need to be. Um, so this is a really busy position, that we have one community paramedic, she's actually also a nurse and so she's dual-certified and so that has been truly a benefit to the county. Um, big things in our budget for this year that have been, the budget was recommended to EMS Oversight Committee and was approved unanimously by the Oversight Committee. Thank you Commissioner Floyd Huggins for participating on that, your support is, is huge for us. Um, and the continued staffing of that peak time ambulance is in there. Um, it started as a trial, really, uh, for the first six months, but the need and the improvement over the first three months of data of that unit has been overwhelmingly positive to support the system, so we're going to continue with the implementation of that. So moving on to communications, uh, Jimmy Hodges, our deputy director, was in here. Um, and I, and I will just tell you real quick that, uh, uh, one of our longtime paramedics, uh, passed away, uh, one of the county's longtime paramedics, she's very young, uh, passed away, uh, over the weekend and that funeral is taking place today. So Jimmy's actually supporting a last call for that, for that young lady, uh, while we're talking right now, so he'll be back in. Uh, Mandy Reeves, um, she actually worked for every squad in the county at some point, so, um, so she, she did 18 years with the county. So we're very, very proud of that and sad to hear about that. But, uh, so 911 is staffed by Deputy Director of Communications, that's Jimmy Hodges, he's stepped out. They have an ops manager, two shift supervisors, um, that kind of oversee the different things, four shift leaders because they have four different shifts. And then... four shift leaders, because they have four different shifts, and then 16 telecommunicators moving through that department. So this year, big things that you may have heard about, we implemented the emergency fire dispatch protocols last month. That just means that there's a standard line of questionings if you have a fire emergency. If you call and say, "My house is on fire," they can help walk you through a step-by-step process to get consistent and adequate questioning for every call. Very similar to the medical dispatch, so they make sure they get the same standardized questioning every time to get the correct information the most amount of the time. So that's gone very well. We used our 911 backup center that was opened last year. We've used that a number of times. We tried to move over there on a training basis once a month and stand that center up, just like we would our regular center. They use that in daily operations and for training, all their new telecommunicators. The Freedom Application is ongoing, that's something that will allow our end-users, our firefighters and EMTs that are volunteers out there in the street, to have a view-only access on their phone or any tablet or computer device, so that they can see what's going on in dispatch, real time. And then, very proud personal accomplishment for Jimmy, he obtained and completed his PSAT Manager Certification Training through the State 911 Board and was recognized at the state level for that. Big accomplishment for him. So biggest things in the 911 budget for the year is that we added the Grimesland Paging Tower as part of the budget, and the annual Motorola Service Agreements that are ongoing. And Scott, I don't know if you want to speak to any of that, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a point of clarification from the presentation yesterday. On the radio and paging, we had put in the presentation the addition, some of the driving costs of what the budget things had cost us. The total amount of money in the proposed budget for 1920 for radio and communications is $583,000. We actually have in the year we're sitting in, this year's budget, about $478,000 that we've already budgeted. So really, the difference between the $583 and the $478 is the further expansion that this year is going. We still have to do the $478 that we're doing this year, still have to do that next year, but with additional, the seventh communication tower coming on for paging and the additional costs, it's going up to $583. But that really should, other than the escalators on the American Tower Corporation lease payments, that should basically cap us out at those costs. I mean, again, it will grow based upon the, those lease payments or the lease agreements. Just wanted to point that out.
And so you guys have been a part of the radio project for a while. Our radio system is a true Cadillac across the state. We can talk from anywhere in our county and neighboring counties to each other clearly and regularly without issue today.
Just to add to that, we embarked on this project probably 10 years ago with the first phase of the project. We worked with Motorola as the contractor, Federal Engineering as the consultant, and we designed with Federal Engineering's help and Motorola's recommendation, a one-tower radio communication system for Pitt County that the Wintergreen Tower, at Wintergreen Elementary School, would communicate back to this tower, but that one tower was supposed to speak to all of the firefighters in EMS, to their paging and their radios, and it was a, I hate to use, the chairman word says flop, but it was not very successful. I mean, it worked, but it didn't give the coverage we needed for all out in the county. So we ended up doing Phase Two of the project, and Phase Two then added, by the end of the day, we had six additional tower sites, I believe.
Six total, we added five, so six total.
So now we have a very state-of-the-art radio and paging communication system that meets the needs of all of the end-users and, more importantly, the public, so that if somebody's being paged out for a fire or EMS incident, you're getting a heart attack, your house is on fire, you've been in a car wreck, we're very confident that that communication is going to get to the appropriate person to get to you to help you.
So kudos to you all for your support of that. The system really is a very nice system. The additional paging site, just quickly, is Grimesland, kind of in the river area down there, Grimesland Clark's Net, kind of eastern part of Simpson. Really didn't, so there was never an identified issue on the old VHF system in getting calls out there. What we noticed with this new type of paging was that the lower area tended to, there was some missed, some miscommunication out there, and so the county was very supportive of trying to make sure that all of the end-users were covered and could receive calls regularly. And so that's where that additional paging site came from. The radio system actually works extremely well in that area, and so the addition of that paging site will ensure the coverage and no dropped calls, so to speak, in that area.
I think it's interesting that if you go back 15 years or plus and you look at the consultant studies, and we had several done that looked at implementing a county-wide, a new county-wide paging radio system for Pitt County, the cost was like 12, 14 million plus dollars, and that price tag really just, that study just got put on the back shelf. The process we went through over the past probably 10 years, eight to 10 years, was very painstaking, but at the end of the day, we didn't spend that kind of money to put this state-of-the-art project into place, but it has cost probably three-fourths of that, I would get you the exact numbers, but it's not the fully loaded cost that we were initially told, but it's been a very painstaking process. But the pain has been worth it. We're there now, finally.
So that page of site is in the works and it's in process to be fixed or being brought online later this year, hopefully, and the fruits of your labor are well-recommended. Thank you for that. The last division of emergency management we'll go over today is our Administration and Planning Division. We have a Director of Emergency Management, an Office Manager, that's Ms. Helen Bryant, make sure you speak to her on the way out, she loves to talk to everybody, she is fantastic, we could not do it without her, and an Emergency Planner, and I won't ask her to stand up, but Ms. Angela Brown is in the back of the room. And, no, you don't have to stand up, I was gonna let you say, no, you're good. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay for that, I'm gonna pay for that later, yeah. But she truly does help, help keep us going, and she understands what all we do very well, and keeps the Plans Division and all of our projects ongoing. So we really could not do it without Ms. Angela and Ms. Helen right now, they are the glue that keeps us together. Big things from emergency management in the past year, Hurricane Florence response efforts, you all were here for that. We were in this room, this room has served us well, we set it up a little different for those of you that have been able to come see us during the EOC activation and come see what we do. All of the county departments band together and we get, get work done, we get things to-
The county is the primary response agency in the county for emergencies, so this, called this the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, so all of these desks are pushed against the wall, telephones, the computers, different, you have everything from all the different county departments, state agencies, DOT, you know, DSS, Health, Emergency Management, the county managers, all, finance, you name it. And it's a call, basically a call coordination center where the EM Director is coordinating all of the efforts in the county. We are recognized by the state of North Carolina as the main point of resource, so if, I mean, City Greenville has their own EOC as well on Fifth Street, but any resources they need, if they need National Guard, if they need anything from the state of North Carolina, they have to call us, and then we put it through the computer portal to the state, and then the state talks to us, and then the resources hopefully are then provided to us.
So everything, everything is coordinated through here, comes in or goes out, so-
American Red Cross, I'm sorry, which-
Yeah, we have, also have-
Dr. Brown, they're in here.
Yeah, and I apologize, Commissioners, Dr. Mike Brown, who serves as the Chair of our EMS Oversight Committee is here, and he's also a great Red Cross partner with us that we see a lot during, in this, during events. And we feel, we've kind of been on a regular plan with Matthew and Florence, so hopefully we'll break that cycle this year. But Governor Cooper did come and visit this, this facility shortly after Hurricane Florence. He came specifically to visit with our telecommunicators, and that was a first for us in this county. That was, that was really awesome, to have the governor in our 911 center visiting and asking questions with our dispatchers. That was fantastic, and I think a few of the Commissioners also came in here and met with him, so thank you for those of y'all that were able to do that. Great opportunity to highlight emergency services, our, the county offices and what we do here. As we've stated a number of times, the radio project is ongoing. I've heard a few times, Ms. Perkins-Williams, that about active shooter drills are important to you and understanding what could happen in the community. And so our staff participated with ECU in their active shooter drill in December. We're coordinating with the school system to host one of those on our own. And so planning is ongoing for that right now, that'll take place at the end of June with Pitt County Schools and Emergency Services here, and we do take those issues very seriously. And then, so we continue to acquire DIPR grants, those are domestic preparedness region grants, those are monies that come down from the Department of Homeland Security at the federal level, and they're passed through to counties in certain regions, and so we get equipment and things from the state to do that. We recently, this year, have acquired a DLX shelter. What that is, it's a, it's a small tent, it's not so small, it's big enough for some small medical services, it's got an HVAC unit that comes with it, so we'll transport that in a, in a trailer. We can set it up with two people anywhere we want, works great for search missions, for disaster missions. If we're housing National Guard units at a local fire station, we can give them heating and air and put them somewhere, really anything that we need to do with that piece of equipment, we can do it. We also have a light tower generator, a couple of message boards that we use, those are housed, we contract with our fire departments to help us house those out of the weather. We are one of two counties in the east that has a mobile shower trailer. That came in real handy for us during Florence response, having that, that was an identified need after Matthew, actually, that the, they were bringing in federal shower trailers to help people. So Pitt County and Gates County, or Pasco-Tank County, excuse me, are the two counties in the east right now that have those six-stall shower trailers, and that's out at our detention facility. And then the UTV that we run, does a medical stretcher-equipped UTV, you might see it at public events, planned events or anything, you may see the Sheriff's Office training with it, or us out training with that. That's a, it's a Polaris UTV with a medical stretcher in it that can go nearby anywhere. Budget highlights for us, we actually would change this, so we're gonna start this year, current year, with auditing of four of the fire departments. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna wade into this a little bit slower than jumping right on in. So we're gonna start with these periodic audits of the fire departments and make sure that our tax dollars are being accounted for.
So right now with the 10, well, 10 EMS squads, two are county-operated squads, so obviously they're audited as part of the counting process, the other eight are audited, and the thought has been that the 20 volunteer fire departments, we should have some type of auditing as well, because the majority of their funds are county-generated tax dollars. We originally wanted to have all 20 of them have the money in the budget to do that, but since we felt like that we should pay for that, and it's-
How much per audit?
Five?
Two, two thousand.
Two thousand per, per audit, we would have it, we would incur those costs within the Emergency Management Department, rather than tell the squad to pay for them, technically the squad should probably pay for them, but we thought it'd be easier, just to, for $2,000 a piece, we'll just incur that cost within the county budget. So we cut that down to four, trying to, trying to trim costs, and then we'll increase that as, as we go. Or we could just do four randomly every year, and only do four, it just depends upon the county's comfortable.
And so we'll, we'll let you, we can report back, you know, you'll, you'll have firsthand knowledge of how that goes as we move into the next year. Like I said, we are truly one family, you all are a part of our family, we can't do it without you, and so we support the entire county, all municipalities, and all the citizens. And so I'll take any questions that you have, and if I don't have the information, I'll bring it back to you as soon as I can.
I think we'll start like before, we'll start on this side, and before we start, would you learn so that everybody won't say everything that we're saying? We're trying to do it fairly as we move through. Speaking for all the Commissioners and all of Pitt County, being involved in this for a long time, just express to all of our volunteers, paid or not paid, it doesn't matter, we have an amazing, amazing department here, and we do appreciate it as Commissioners. And they go out, they do fundraising, they come forward with that money, they spend it locally on their citizens, and there, there's such a camaraderie in that they all support each other regardless of how large their department is compared to their neighbor and what's going on. So we have an outstanding group here in Pitt County, and just, we want them to know that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Let's go. Okay.
No questions, thank you. Fantastic. No questions.
I, Commissioner Albright, Coles, and I met, we're invited yesterday, and we heard that their repeat hospital stays are down, and so to hear that you're doing this community paramedic program that assists that, so that's really a plus, you know, for that. Also, I just want to say that my church, Sigma Hill, is doing an active shooter meetings for, meeting for its membership tonight, so glad to hear that, you know, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Keep up the good work.
All right, thank you.
Your work.
No questions, but thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you in your department for your service. Outstanding.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand, this emergency management line, the budget for the 911, I'm looking at some of the walls of the, Jim's presentation, the very last presentation with him as Director, the Office Manager and EM, that is the budget for that particular general fund department, and then if you turn the page, there's an entire EMS fund-
Right here, this is right here.
Yes.
Yes, this is, yeah, okay, that was, that's, comes out right here.
That's the fund that has 4.6 in tax.
Okay, thank you.
No, if there's no other questions, then I will let you continue on, I appreciate your time, and if you ever do have questions, comments, feedback, we welcome it all, we can improve without feedback from the citizens, so if you have that, then we will certainly try to improve and we'll take that and we'll move on. And, so, yes, ma'am. So thank you all, and good luck with the rest of your workshops.
Thank you. And is the judge here?
Yes.
Is the judge here?
I heard a yes. No, I don't see him, so.
John, John?
Cooper.
Was just gonna jump you by the judge? Kind of like jumping, you know?
Oh, thank you.
I mean, we're a little ahead of schedule.
Good morning, thanks for the opportunity to come before you and talk a little bit of trash.
That's the last thing we can do.
My ex-wife told me not to say that stuff. Maybe that's why it's ex. First of all, just like to say that Pitt County in recycling is, is, has ranked in the top 1% in the state for the last, I don't know, 10, 15 years. We've been number one in the state a number of years, second and third, and it's by per capita, so we can compete with the Mecklenburgs and the Wake Counties. If you go and, and someone says you're from Pitt County, and they're talking about recycling, they're gonna say, "We do a good job." All right, we have a mission, and our mission is to provide everyone in the community with waste disposal capacity, we, waste collection services and waste reduction activities. We try to increase our efficiency and keep our cost-effectiveness of our solid waste program. We strive to meet established waste reduction goals, decrease improper waste disposal, and try to protect the public health and the environment. As you may or may not know, we operate a transfer station, our landfill closed in 1996. We operate a transfer station, we send our waste to a private facility in Bertie County, Republic Services. Our transfer station, picture here, what goes up there is our residential trash, our commercial trash, our industrial trash, anything that's not construction or demolition or materials that we're recycling like shingles- demolition or materials that we're recycling like shingles and cardboard, yard waste and those types. But basically, your kitchen type garbage. Last year, we sent over 109,000 tons to landfill. That was up by about 9,000 tons from the previous year. Can look at it both ways. I look at it as that maybe the economy's getting better. Cause when the economy goes up, trash goes up. We also operate a construction and demolition debris recycling facility. We opened this in March of 2015. This was a 1.5, 1.8 million dollar investment that the commissioners approved. And so far, from the previous year, these are data from the previous year, we've reduced what we're sending to the landfill by 50%. We're, we're working to, to improve that. Construction recently has, has increased with the amount of construction at the hospital, with the construction at ECU, the new housing that's going up. But, a lot of these facilities are looking for a lead program, which is a, a program where they've got to recycle and do environmentally sound things so that they can have their building identified. And so, nobody in the community was really recycling CND waste. So, we took it upon ourselves to do this. We get quite a bit of waste that we have to let the customer know how much is being recycled. We also operate, operate a yard waste facility. We, in 1718, we did, brought in 15,000 tons of yard waste. I always say to people, if you come out there and just watch the yard waste trucks, you'd be surprised that there's trees still left in Pitt County. Cause it is amazing how much yard waste comes in. We also, in our yard waste facility, recycle pallets. We bring those in separately and, as well as clean wood. These are comparison from 1718 figures and then through April 26 of this fiscal year. Our pallets and clean wood have gone down and I would say that's because we started charging for them this past year. It's why they're down a little bit. Here's some facts that I'd like to share about our yard waste and mulch. Back in 16, fiscal year 1617, we spent over $800,000 getting rid of, rid of our mulch. There wasn't a market for it. We had to pay extra trucking to get rid of the material. Came to you and got approval to purchase a, a chlorazidyl grinder for the price of $750,000. To date, through April, we have after trucking costs added $150,000 to our budget from, we're able to sell the material. We're selling the material to, most of it to Cravenwood Energy. They're using it for a, a power source and selling it back. And plus, we're getting paid for it. So, it's been a, it's, it's a program that I didn't think it would take off like this, but it's, it's very good.
I don't want to interrupt, but I just want to kind of understood for the citizens that might be seeing this or whatever. This is self-sustaining. You all do this with the money.
Yes, ma'am.
And whatever. We don't give them that $700,000 or whatever it was.
Enterprise fund.
It's like an enterprise fund. They've, and we have reached this after many years. So, I just want to make sure that's understood.
I balance my budget every year. I, I come up with my revenue number and then work back through my expenses. And I try to be as, as conscious of that money as, as possible. I run it like a business. And I don't want to come back to you and ask for any more money.
It's a different place than we were back when. I don't know how long we've been doing this.
Probably prior to me. I know it was an enterprise.
Not, no.
Mike, it's an enterprise fund.
Probably the beginning.
Yeah, but maybe not this successful. I think is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. We do give away mulch free to the public right now. We screen the material. We have a screener out there and we screen it. It's very good product. Convinced East Carolina to, to now get mulch where they were buying it. So, it's a very good product. Anybody wants some, come get all you want. This is a future household hazardous waste facility. We received a grant last year to, to repair this building and change it around. We also are in the process, I should be coming back to you sometime in June with RFP to, we're gonna expand the building. Another grant that we got, it'll be mostly paid out of grant funds. We're gonna expand it hopefully and first of July, we'll be able to take household hazardous waste. Something that is, is gonna be new to us, we do take paints and antifreeze, motor oil and those types of things, but we'll be able to add, you know, fluorescent light bulbs, pesticides, herbicides. Any kind of pesticide or herbicide, the state will take care of it for free. There will be somewhat of a, of a cost here, but it's also a benefit. And we get calls constantly from the public, what can I do with this? And we don't want them to go pour it out in a ditch or, or do something illegal. So, it's something that we need to do and we're moving forward with that.
Sharp?
Sharp is a needle. We do take needles from the public. They do go to landfill. We just make sure that they're packaged properly and, and put with the trash. We don't take them from the hospital or, or any medical facility. We also collect TVs and electronics. This program, TVs and electronics were banned from the landfill a number of years ago. This is one area that I, I wish the state would revisit. It cost us about $150,000 a year. Did I do something?
Oh, it's, we're through.
Okay.
I'm gonna take a motion for adjournment.
It costs us $150,000 to get rid of the electronics and TVs. And it's mostly TVs, what they're called the CRTs, the old TVs. And there again, it, they seem to be growing out of the ground because they're not stopping. And it, and the reason why they're expensive to get rid of is because there's lead in the, in the tube and there's not many places in America that can extract the, the lead from, from the TV. The electronics, we do get money for those, but it's not very much. Shingles, just want to touch on our shingle program. We were the first in the state to recycle post-consumer shingles. This, it came about in 2009, once I first got here. And since we've started the program, we've saved over $2 million in, in tipping fees. And also have received, we sell the shingles as well. And we received over $700,000 in revenue. There again, that revenue comes back to me and is, it help pays. During Irene, during the, after the hurricane of Irene, we kept probably 75 to 80% of the shingles that were brought to us out of the landfill. And trust me, there were days that it got really, really bad. There'd be 40 trucks lined up where, there.
John, the shingles are melted down.
Yeah. Road paving, the shingles. They get the petroleum product out of the, out of the shingles. They go through a process and they use it in the, what they call the liquid gold or the hot mix asphalt. Just real quickly across the scales. This data is from fiscal year 1718. We have about 217 vehicles across our scales daily. Most recently, the last month or two, listening to the ladies at the scale house, we've had over 300 vehicles some days. Yesterday, we ran, we loaded 27 trailers of, of garbage just yesterday. We process over 550 tons of material. That's everything going across the scales. We sent over 122,000 tons of material to the both landfills. One to the Bertie landfill and then we've got the CND goes to a local landfill. We processed over 15,000 tons of yard waste and we recycled 1,400 tons of metal. We sold that metal. That's another revenue generation for us. And then, we recycled five, over 5,000 tons of shingles. Everything that comes across scales has to be weighed. We have to report all of our data to the state. Plus, it's the way we charge. We charge by the ton. Real quickly about our convenience sites. We got 14 of them. I'm not gonna tell you the, all the locations, but I think we did a study with East Carolina students a number of years ago. And some of the data that we collected, everybody, or it was noted that everybody was within about 2.8 miles of a site. So, I feel that's pretty convenient. We have them strategically located throughout. We are, we, we take garbage, we take electronics, we take yard waste, take most everything that we take at the transfer station except tires. White goods, we're open, we're open some 75 hours a week during the summer. The only three days that the sites are closed are Easter, Thanksgiving and Christmas. All other days were open. Sunday, we're only open from 2 to 7:30, but we, Monday through Saturday, we're open all day. And if you've been to some of them, some of them are a lot more busier than others. The Bells Fork site, if you've ever been there on a Saturday, you gotta watch out because you get run over. It's so busy. Our household fee currently is at $71. And I wanted to let you know and let the public know, what, what do you get for that household fee? Everybody's charged $71 a year. They're not charged, nobody's charged for residential waste. If you live inside the city of Greenville or Winterville, or if you've got a private company that picks up your residential waste, they come across our scales. We do not charge them a tipping fee. You're able to use any of the convenience sites. So, the city of Greenville's residential trucks aren't charged. You can bring all your yard waste to the, to any one of our facilities. We have a facility at the Aiden Griffin site. You can bring them to the sites or to the transfer station. Not charged for electronics. We don't charge for those. And we don't charge for recyclables. John Coward recently came before y'all to let y'all know that this, this side of recycling and so, we do pay a tipping fee there. That tipping fee is paid by us for all the recyclables that go to ECDC. I just wanted to do this, the average, to let folks know because every year when the tax bill gets out, we get a few phone calls of, why do I pay $71? The city of Greenville picks up my garbage. So, I give them my spill. But, the average household produces 6,351 pounds of trash. That's 3.1, little over three tons of trash a year. Okay? If we multiplied that by the $45 that we charge for commercial rate, you would be paying over $147 a, a year to get ready your garbage. And, and that's not taking in count the yard waste and the other things that they can bring free. So, I think that the $71 is a, or $75 or $80 is a fair and good number. And I've, and I've spent 27 years in the solid waste field, worked a couple of counties in North Carolina, worked private sector and worked in a couple of different states. And I will stand up and say Pitt County has the easiest and cheapest method to get rid of their solid waste than any place I've ever lived.
Did you get the car tires? Cause they're just. Would I tell you their problem?
Well, we take, we don't charge for tires. Anybody can bring tires. We take tires free. We get, we get reimbursed for our tire disposal. We're, we're looking at, I'm looking at some things that we may do different, but right now, I'd like to just leave it at that.
So, the household fee of $71 is a one-time fee. It's paid on the tax bill and the tax bill goes out. It's really, I think in the past, we've even called it availability.
A fee.
That the transfer station, the convenience sites are available for you to bring your, your garbage. Whether you bring it voluntarily, like you might bring it to one of the 14 convenience sites, or if you live in the city, it creates a, a framework and structure for the city of Greenville via their services to collect the garbage and bring it to the county. Then we, then we deal with it. And so, it's a one-time charge. It equates to $5.92 a month if you're, wanna make it a, you know, a 12-month basis, but $71. And what John's gonna allude to coming up here in a minute is gonna be increasing that by 25 cents a month. $3 charge going from 71 to 74. So, instead of $5.92 a month, you're talking about $6.17 a month. And he's gonna give the justification for that.
Yep. If, here is my proposed tipping fees with the current tipping fees. I would like to reiterate that I've been here since 2008 and we, I have asked for one price increase and, and it was approved in 2009. So, I have tried over the years to absorb, we've had a number of price increases from the landfill where we take our garbage. When, when I first here, was here in 2009, we didn't pay a tipping fee for, for recyclables. So, there's a number of things that we have absorbed without asking for a price increase. It's my first price increase since 2009. And we're looking to go in a commercial tipping fee from 45 to 48 and then construction from 40 to 43 and then the household fee from 71 to 74. I think they're fair numbers. I, I still think it's, it's inexpensive. A slide or two after this, I'll show you some comparable counties in the area. And well, it's the next slide. These are some of the, the surrounding counties. Lenora County charges $50 for municipal solid waste and that's MSW. That's the commercial rate. Construction, they charge 45. They've got a household fee of $90. They charge their folks $30 for yard waste where we don't. You can just go through that. And I still think even with our, with our proposed increases, we're still gonna be very, still have very good rates. And real quickly, we had a company come in to, to look at our finances, our budget. And I'll let Brian speak to this a little bit.
So, we met with John early in the budget process and it did look like we were gonna face some type of increases in some of these. So, this company, Weldon, is a municipal and county consultant that looks at all county services. And we contracted with them to look at our history and to look at our projected increases in CIP, to look at it structurally, to see if our existing revenues would be sufficient for what we are looking at doing, to do going forward. It turns out at the end of the day, John's analysis matched their analysis. So, that, that made us feel very confident that we could come to you and make this recommendation on the tax increase, I mean, excuse me, on the fee increase. Since both, what, they're, they're the experts in this and, and we did our own look matched. So, we feel highly confident. We did plug in a 2% growth to look at the next 10 years and we felt that the increases that John was proposing should eliminate us having to come back in the future, in the near future for additional increases.
So, this is a computer model spreadsheet, like Brian was saying, looking at debt service, looking at future CIP needs, operating costs, tipping fees, the household fee. All, we even have a, a growth factor in there, 2% for, describe that.
New residents.
New residents. What things would cost operationally to, to see what, what that does to the fund balance and what that does to the sustainability of the fund. Cause a fund has to balance and we need some fund balance, just like we have this cap issue that came up that we're dealing with now. We have to have some post-closure funds set aside for the closed out landfill on the site. And we're, we're good in that respect because we have those funds on hand and we can use those set aside funds for that purpose.
Are you finished? No, you're not. Go ahead.
Couple more slides.
I remember.
Just wanted to talk about litter control a little bit, cause that is on everybody's mind. Our, we hired a new environmental officer since our other one has retired, Deputy We hired a new environmental officer since our other one has retired, Deputy Mealy. You may remember him, he used to work up here. He has taken off and has done a wonderful job. He patrols the entire county, he helps to inspect our convenience sites. He's investigated some illegal dumping and he's, he's gotten some cleaned up. He works with the detention center, taking out inmates. He's coordinated with NC DOT on their litter pickup. And he's also, we're working with community service to take community service people out on Saturdays and, and patrols to ensure that citizens are secure in their loads. And if you see this picture, we've gotten these signs made up, all these signs. If you come into our facility now, you'll see that, a big sign on the scale house, plus we're gonna put these at all the sites as well. And that, with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And we'll start over there and go this way.
And, and I, I do wanna say one more thing on litter control. The state now hires private companies to go out and pick up and, and we do not charge when these companies come in with litter. That, that's another thing, we don't charge for them, we've never done that. I thought about it at one time, but, but I, but I think it would be not right. We need to let that material come in and let's absorb it. And they come in every day. And we work with these companies on roads that we have issues on and we'll ask them to go hit these roads.
Sounds beautiful to me and I. Love the sign. Thank you.
Thank you, in particular, your recycling program, there's no wood, so thank you for John, we appreciate you. As long as supportive of everybody, including you folks.
Thank you so much for the job you're doing, appreciate it. Okay? We were a little ahead of schedule, Judge Blunt, if you'll come forward, even though we had to make you wait a little bit. You've never done that in your courtroom, right?
First of all. I know the rest of you, wanted to formally introduce myself.
Okay. All right, Madam Chair, County Manager, staff, I don't have a fancy or flashy handout to provide to you today, but I do wanna give you, I do have a handout, do wanna give you some information and discuss and request the county support for a Pitt County pre-trial services program. I've got fifteen copies, so I don't know. It should be fourteen. Got one extra one if we need another. And once those are distributed, I know you, most of you have been doing this for many, many, many years and I know that you've all looked at that request of one hundred and fifty thousand, it's not gonna be one hundred and fifty thousand, so I wanna go ahead and clarify that. Again, I want to thank, thank the Commissioners, thank the staff for providing me an opportunity to present to this budget workshop. I wanted to first just reiterate that the request for the startup and the creation of a Pitt County pre-trial services program has been the result of a collaborative process. We've really picked up speed over the last six months. It's something that I've been working on for almost two years, trying to gather information about this program, the benefits of the program and doing research across the state and across the country about these types of programs and the benefits that these programs provide. As you know, I was before the commission in December of two thousand and eighteen. At that time, I requested the appointment of two members or members of the county commission to join a local committee to look at and research the pre-trial services, release and services program. And Commissioners Fitzpatrick and Commissioner McGlawnhorn were designated as representatives of the local committee. You'll see in the, in the handout that I provided to you, the, it, it's been a collaborative process. I mean, we do have support from all of the stakeholders, the judiciary, the Public Defender's Office, Mr. Burke Kemp, our Public Defender's present here with me today, Ferris Dixon and our District Attorney's Office, Sheriff Paula Dance, and also Chief, Greenville Police Chief Mark Holson. You'll also see the local committee, I'm not gonna go through all of the, the names on the committee, but you will note that your county manager was part of the local committee, as was your county attorney and your assistant county attorney along with Commissioners McGlawnhorn and Commissioners Fitzpatrick. I did want to advise, I mean, you may, you are probably aware that in January of two thousand and eighteen, our North Carolina Attorney General Josh, Josh Stein hosted a roundtable in Raleigh. We were invited, I think there were eighteen counties that were invited to participate in this roundtable to discuss pre-trial release and pre-trial and accountability as it relates to pre-trial services. The, as I said, I think we have had tremendous support in the community and stakeholders. There've been a number of articles, Ginger Livingston had written an earlier article about pre-trial release based on my presentation. And in your materials, you'll note on the last page, I've included a, an editorial that was in the Daily Reflector last week that was written by John Hood, who is the Chairman of the John Locke Foundation, discussing pre-trial release and his perspective. I think it's, I think he's right and, and it's a, it's a good perspective, but I think there is strong, strong support. One thing I'm gonna do now, I know, I don't know if all of you have heard this, but I like to give a, an example and illustration about pre-trial release and put it in perspective. I know that the lawyers that are on the board, certainly Mr. Fitzpatrick, that handles criminal cases and is familiar with our process knows, Mr. Nunley knows and others, Mr. McGlawnhorn would know based on his prior experience. But it, this is an example that I give is that, let's suppose that there's three young individuals that go out over the, over the weekend and break into a couple of cars and, over the weekend. And breaking and entering a motor vehicle is a class I felony. It's the lowest level felony, it's a class I felony, it could provide a probation, could be an active sentence, but generally, most people charged with the class I felony and if they don't have much of a record are going to ultimately get probation. So when those individuals are charged, they're taken before magistrate, the magistrate does an intake on that individual and sets a bond. That's the way that our, our state system works, as do many states, we're required to set a bond in all cases. The magistrates set the bond in cases and based on the range of bonds, which I determined and make the bond policy, a magistrate will set a bond within the designated range. And for example, let's say that they're placed on a thousand dollar bond each. Suppose that two of those individuals live in a nice neighborhood and have a family with means and the third individual doesn't have the benefit of family support or, or means. Well, the two that have the means, they're gonna make their bond, their family's gonna get them out, they're not gonna, may not spend a night in jail. The other individual, if he or she doesn't make bond, then they're, they're gonna sit in jail until their bond is reduced or some other measure is allowed to, to provide that person, you know, released from, from jail. And, and that's a simple, that's a simple view, but I think it's a good, a, a good analysis of how our, of how our system works. Currently, when the two people that, that have means are released from jail, they're able to hire a private lawyer. If someone doesn't have the means and they're indigent, they're gonna get appointed, the Public Defender or the Public Defender's going to appoint an attorney to represent that individual and that individual is going to be, you know, released from jail with a court date and little, little other resources. And I don't wanna get into all of the, the benefits of pre-trial services and the services that you can provide, because there are a number of them. There are counties that provide multiple levels of services with their pre-trial release and pre-trial services programs for mental health issues, substance abuse, job training, others. At this point, what I'm requesting and what we are, the committee is requesting is the creation of a pilot program that just addresses the startup needs for having a program in place that can look at cases that are low-level felonies, the class I felony and misdemeanors. And these are for offenders who don't have a violent record and have not committed a violent offense. And within our process, rather than having people sitting in jail that are not violent, haven't committed a violent offense, they are released but with supervision. And that is what pre-trial release and pre-trial supervision is. It is a release but with supervision and, you know, we can debate the arguments of, of, of how our system works, but the reality of our system is, is that, that they, people aren't released and, but releasing them with supervision is an, is an alternative that is gaining momentum, not only in our state, but across, across the country. And let me say, I think it is not being soft on crime, but this is being smart on crime. And that's what, what we need to address. The, the goals of the program I've set out, and these are just the county goals, would be to create a, a department of county government. That department would be either supervised or delegated supervision from the county manager, I believe, or the county manager's delegated authority. Hire a Director of Pre-Trial Services. The, once a pre-trial services director is hired, the second step would be to hire a pre-trial services specialist. Third, identify office space, preferably in the courthouse or somewhere in close proximity. Implement an evidence-based risk assessment tool to make recommendations to the court. Provide monitoring and supervision in accordance with the pre-trial release program. Implement a court reminder system either through the administrative office of the courts or through a purchase system. And then an important aspect is hiring an executive director who can assist in seeking and acquiring additional grant funds to further development, to further develop the program. You'll note in the handouts that I've included, you should have a, a chart of, a page that has two charts on it. The, the reason I provided those, and these, this is materials that were provided to us from the Attorney General's Roundtable on Pre-Trial Release and Accountability. These are the counties that were invited statewide to attend the program and the roundtable. It shows which counties have a pre-trial release program and whether it's a county agency or a nonprofit but under contract with the county. I don't know, I, I know that most of the ones I'm familiar with are the county, are county, are county-funded agencies.
I was just kinda wondering.
The, the nonprofits, to me, with the exception of Wake, they're smaller counties and I think that there's limited, that their programs are not, they don't have the population and the caseload that the larger counties, but I know that Wake has a nonprofit, but they fund, it's funded through the county. The county funds the nonprofit. I'd be glad to get that back to you, back with you, Madam Chair. And the timeline, as referenced in the materials, would be to hire a, or fund in the July two thousand and nineteen funding period, hire a director in September two thousand and nineteen, hire a specialist in November, and the goal would be to implement and to go live on January first of twenty twenty. The, at this time, and I want to acknowledge that I know that, that, that funding is difficult. It's a difficult decision, it's a, a difficult task and, and I'm familiar with the challenges that Pitt County has with its tax base and the reality of our, the benefits of Pitt County and our area is to have a great hospital, a great medical community, a great university, a great community college, but they don't provide a lot of tax benefit to the county. So I understand that, but I spoke with the Commissioner earlier and just, we were talking on some other matters and it's, you know, we're still, as you all know, one of the largest counties in our state and in our criminal justice system, we've got the problems and realities that a large, a large community has. And we do have our challenges, but I do want to acknowledge and understand that, that I know that funding is difficult and, and I appreciate the consideration of the county for this program. I did wanna highlight what I believe will be some immediate benefits to the county by implementing this program. I think that it will, we will show, or it will show an immediate reduction in jail population. We've met with the Sheriff's Office and District Attorney's Office and the committee has been present during some of those discussions and believe that a ten percent reduction in jail population is a, is a great possibility. We're talking maybe four to five people a week, so that adds up to twenty a month, two hundred and forty a year, and I think those may be conservative, conservative estimates. As you all know, a reduced jail population will result in some reduced jail costs. The second, on the second page, the chart that I showed you or provided you at the bottom of the page, it shows the cost of day, the right-hand column, well, the left-hand column is the cost of jail across the state for these jurisdictions to detain someone. Keeping people in jail is an expensive, expensive proposition. Pitt County, I think it's at least a hu, it's at least a hundred, if not over a hun, around a hundred dollars, I believe. And while the benefit, an immediate benefit will be the reduced jail population, I think an indirect benefit of reduced jail population, as you all know, that when someone is confined in the detention center, arrested and confined, they lose their Medicaid eligibility. And in jail, people get sick, there are fights, people get hurt, and when there's medical costs incurred, the county bears one hundred percent, one hundred percent. And I believe that that number, at least historically, has been anywhere from two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars a year for the county regarding medical costs. It's a, it's a significant, it's a, it's a significant cost. Another thing, another, if not direct and indirect benefit is legal liability. As you know, the county gets sued over jail-related issues and it's hoped that reducing the jail population will also provide some benefit to legal, legal liability that the county encounters. One important aspect of pre-trial release that, that I think the committee and everyone understands in looking at this, these programs, it's, it's of a tremendous benefit and it's not much of a cost, is a court reminder system. And the court reminder system is much, the areas that use it, much like when you have a doctor's appointment and you're, on your phone, you get a, a periodic reminder of your doctor's appointment. Well, we and the committee planned Well, uh, we and the committee, uh, plan that the pretrial, uh, services program have a court reminder system that gets people to court. A lot of, there are a lot of people called out on a daily basis for not making their court date, and sometimes it's just a matter of them not having the right address. And in our system, our public defender, I know he can, can tell you and, and, and express that they, they send a lot of letters out to their last known address and hope that that might reach that person. But with pretrial release, we'll be supervising, or those individuals will be supervised and will have access to those individuals. But the court reminder system, I think, is going to provide, uh, another benefit to the county in that it will reduce the failure to appear, which will reduce in the processing. County, uh, law enforcement won't have to go out and arrest people for a failure to appear. And then, you know, that would also, um, result in, uh, less, uh, jail population. I shared this statistic before, and I'm gonna have to share it again, 'cause it was amazing to me, and is that in Charlotte, during their first two years in Mecklenburg County, when they implemented their, uh, pretrial release and pretrial services program, uh, they implemented the court reminder system. And within their court reminder system, of the people that were screened, placed on pretrial release, supervised under their program, ninety-eight percent of those individuals, um, made their court date. We don't have the statistics here, but I can tell you, next week and, uh, actually this week, Judge Cole is here. He's our other Pitt County resident judge, if y'all don't know him. He, they love him in Pitt County, and we love, he loves to come here. But Judge Cole, uh, comes and handles admin for us, for Judge Foster and I occasionally. But on the calendar, I would assure you that, that probably yesterday and today and tomorrow, we have court at the courthouse. There'll be anywhere from a hundred to two hundred and fifty, and Mr. Kemp might know, cases a day. But there will be twenty-five to forty individuals that will not show up, that an order for arrest will be issued on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, which requires the sheriff to begin that process of, of issuing an order of arrest. Um, so those are, are, are some of the, uh, some of the benefits to the county. I'm not going to get into the program benefits. I'd be glad to, to answer any questions about that. But, uh, a, a, at this time, I would just respectfully, respectfully request, uh, the county to fund, um, a half-year pilot, uh, program in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that, uh, hundred thousand dollars would provide a startup opportunity, uh, with a January one, uh, start date. Hire a, um, executive director, hire one case manager, uh, use existing office space and existis, an existing vehicle, um, and have some limited funds for, uh, software and supplies. But I, 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 I am, um, confident that with the, um, support of the county and the stakeholders, that this is going to be a, a, a successful program, is something that we need in Pitt County, is something that we need in our, in our, um, justice, local justice system. In fact, there's only one county east of I-95 that has a pretrial release program, and that's New Hanover County, and it's time for Pitt County to, uh, in our area to, um, to address, uh, address this important matter. I'm going to ask that the, uh, that the funding, be a general fund allocation, um, and in the alternative funding, uh, through, uh, the state. I know that the general, uh, fund allocation is, um, make, is challenging as stated, but I believe that, that there are direct, uh, benefits to the county to consider. I will say that, um, our legislative leaders are aware of this, they're supportive of this. Um, I've been in communication with our legislative leaders and Representative, uh, Greg Murphy. I spoke with Representative Greg Murphy last night, or yesterday, and, um, and I have been in regular contact with Senator Davis, and, uh, believe their support, um, and I know that they strongly support this and hopeful that, uh, at the state, uh, level, that they can provide, uh, the county. I'm not sure if that would be contingency funds. I don't believe it's in the, currently in the, in the state budget at this point, but, uh, there would be contingency, there, if there are contingency funds available, I know that they're, that, that, that both the state and the House would be, uh, supportive of that. So, um, again, thank you for your time. Uh, thank you Commissioners McGlaughorn and Commissioner Fitzpatrick and your county manager, county attorney. They've, uh, we've met several times and, uh, and many, uh, went to Raleigh and, and to the Attorney General's Roundtable. We all learned a lot, uh, continue to learn about it, and, uh, I'm excited about the opportunity and, and, uh, respectfully, uh, request the county's support. Any questions? Other than lunch, I know lunch is-
What we've been doing is going around and letting, if they have questions, we'll ask them, or comments, or whatever.
Thank you for your, uh, presentation and for your commitment to this program. It sounded like you were going to go into this area and, uh, follow up. Um, this, you might not get aggressive, but assuming this gets funded for a half-year, we talked about how big the funding is to work.
I, I think at this ti, at this point, you know, the, the goal is to, that let's get it off the ground. Um, I'm, I'm hopeful, and it's been no, um, secret, that I, I believe the, the city should be a participant in this program. About thirty-seven percent of the arrests in our county come from the city of Greenville, and I think it would be important for them to be, uh, a key, um, a participant. But also recognize the challenging of, of government and, and intergovernment, um, responsibilities and, um, I don't, I, I think it might be more difficult to require the city and the county to try to work together, the details of oversight and creation. But I, I, I hope, I hope the city will be a partner. Um, I know that East Carolina University has expressed interest, and I think we've got support from East Carolina. Um, I think, uh, the grant opportunity, I know Senator Davis has already, um, put in a bill to have some money set aside in the crime, in the crime commission, but, um, it, and, and a hundred thousand will, will, will get us started, but I'm not gonna, I mean, it's gonna cost more, it's gonna cost more than the hundred and fifty thousand or six, fifty thousand dollar budget. There'll be some startup costs that would, would not be recurring, but, you know, we're going to probably need, um, three, a staff of three to four. But, but, but I don't see it becoming a million-dollar-
The bill after that.
Well, I, 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 I see, based on my research and the committees looked at these, the, the counties that are comparable to us, um, most of them have a staff of four. And-
In essence, this would be kind of a part of the county government per se, a functional category of this general fund. And at the end of the day, it will be a, it'll be general fund funded. We may get year one startup costs, but may, may not, but one, like, we'll, we'll have to compensate out of the general fund. I support it, I'm just, just wondering.
Say the reality of what it is. And I think that there's a lot of discussion about this, not only in the state of North Carolina, but across the country. And I know our, our, our Chief Justice, uh, Sherry, um, Beasley, this is something that's important to her. It's important to, you know, it's important to our system, you know, recognizing the need and, and, you know, some states fund this. Uh, others, you know, are, there's little money and everything is done with nonprofits. But in North Carolina, the counties that have this, the jurisdictions that have it, it's typically a, a county function. Now, there's some, um, and I'm not asking for it, and I don't know that Pitt will, 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 will get there, but, uh, Buncombe County was surprising to me. I mean, they're, they, they allocate, they fund about one, almost one point two million dollars a year to their pretrial release program. Mecklenburg is over a million dollars, and they, they have attorneys that, uh, work on staff. I think they've got a staff of seventeen to twenty people, and, and, and it is, I, you know, I think, I don't know if we shared this before or talked about it, but, you know, a, a lot of it is, is driven, was driven by, um, jail overcrowding. We don't necessarily have that problem here, but what happened is that the areas with jail overcrowding found out that by releasing the right individuals, using a proper screening tool to identify those individuals who are not going to be violent, who are, are going to, uh, make their court date, getting them in these pretrial release programs and pretrial supervision programs, that it's been successful. They've been making their court date, and I don't know, Bert, do you have that statistic of what, Mecklenburg just released a, a statistic that, it, it was something around, and I don't want to quote you wrong, I'll get it to you, but of the people that were in the Mecklenburg County pretrial release program, these individuals charged with a crime, released, some with electronic monitoring, I'm not asking for electronic monitoring at this point, but, um, uh, the percentage of people that made their court date, it wasn't as high as ninety-eight percent, those were their first two years, but it was in the nineties. And I think it were, their, their number of individuals who had not re-offended was in the eighty percent range. That's, that's a good, you know, that's a good, um, positive statistic.
If I may, I'm working with the county office, just speaking to the, that one said, Sean, with that, Mecklenburg, they would just type of program, it was, it was, it's a great program. They saw the stickers, having to go in, bring them to jail, and it took everybody back, and it was a process. So I know, I, it's a public program, and we have bias, and since they're telling us good things, uh, essentially, Mecklenburg, in Charlotte, went this way, because you're looking to try to, you guys can't figure out, but they were having our heroes, and bring them to jail, and they're hoping to tend to-
Well, hundreds of millions, I think.
Yeah, I, I think it was a hundred million dollars. So, uh, that's a very robust program, and they're investing in, uh, dangerous, and it's just, they, like, a better, less expensive way, and, uh, they're trying to figure out purposes.
And, and I may get this question, I'm sure somebody's thinking it, but, um, Mecklenburg County, the amount, the types of crimes that would disqualify an individual, and we're gonna write the, the, the policy here, it, it, it does not apply to any, any serious criminal offense. It wouldn't apply to, um, murder, um, weapons offenses, sex offenses, and we can set the criteria. I mean, I think it would be low-level felonies and misdemeanors only. So someone charged with a serious crime would not even be eligible, would not even be screened. They would go through the normal process, having a bond set on them, go to jail, make bond, or, and get out, or not make bond and stay in jail.
Thank you, Judge, for your vision.
I have one, uh, a question as it relates to juvenile justice and crime prevention. Is this, uh, gonna be a part of it, or is it, will it be, uh, um, considered as a, 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 you know, the impact as it relates to it? 'Cause it seems like, you know, there are a lot of, uh, the juveniles who are placed in that slot, under that simple example that you gave.
Yeah, they are. And, um, you know, as you know, that in December, the North Carolina's raising the age to eighteen for, for, uh, minorities, so those under the age of eighteen will not be, they can be charged, um, for serious, uh, uh, serious offenses as an adult, but on the lower-level offenses, they would not, uh, uh, would not be charged. So I think in, in theory, it would not capture-
But it will be a part of this program or considered as a part of this?
It's, it would be-
It's, I, I know it's not in any minute.
It's just, yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's like, it's a different category. They'll be treated differently in, in, um, under the new system.
Thank you.
Uh, Judge, thanks for coming. Um, and, you know, I'll say that, you know, I think, looking nationally, it's great to hear that we have leadership here in Pitt County looking to do, um, look at our bail and pretrial lease, release programs and make them more efficient and effective at, um, doing justice as, as we, as we ought to. And I think, um, and I, and my question for you is, and I'm sure you don't have the figures for me today, but it does just kind of read the tea leaves. This move is not, it, it costs money to make this move, but the backside of it is that the criminal justice system saves, because we're, we're better able to get people back into court, um, and we're not spending extra money that's not necessary to, to keep them housed in a place where they don't necessarily need to be. Is that the long and short of it?
I, I mean, you know, you've talked on a broader question. I can talk about it a, a lot longer than the time that I have. I think that the benefits to the program, it, it, I, I, it doesn't benefit our system for someone who, the bond, let me back up. The purpose of a bond is twofold, to assure their appearance in court, this is the law, assure their appearance in court, and to do no harm. Um, and, and you, and the, and the court and the law requires judicial officials to use the least restrictive, um, obligations under that, uh, under the, under our system. By putting individuals in jail who are going to get probation eventually, and them staying in jail for thirty days, sixty days, or ninety days, sometimes they'll plead guilty just to get out of jail. It happens all, I hold, I've held court all over this state. I've had many times, people coming to me, said, "Judge Blount, I just want to get out of that jail. I'm, I'm taking this plea." And they're sitting in jail on pretrial conditions. Um, I don't think it does any good for our system, and that's not what, you know, what our system cont, contemplates. And I think you look at John, um, John Hood's article, and that's what he said, "B, bond is not to punish someone, and is not, is to assure their appearance and to do no harm." But I do think there are a lot of benefits that, you know, down the road, that our system and our society will see, those are just typi, are difficult to quantify. But I hope that, you know, someone arrested for a low-level offense and is not a violent individual and, and is gonna make their court date, gets into this program and gets out of jail and not spends days or weeks in jail, because I think that, that may take that individual down the wrong path. But, thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to say-
And I can talk about this all day, but I know y'all've got lunch.
I think, from what I'm hearing, this program will be kind of a equalizer for our, our citizens, for some of the people, uh, without means.
There are a lot of people sitting in jail because they're poor, and, and-
So, thank you.
And, and I think that, you know, with the jail, they, they need to be, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the, this is my personal opinion, on behalf of the sheriff and the, we've got great individuals at the detention center, and there are some people over there that need to be there, but they believe, I believe their attention needs to be on the individuals that need to be there. And, um, there are people there that are there because they don't have the means, but we just can't let them out. I mean, that's why we don't have an option. We're trying to fill a gap that doesn't exist, and, and, and I'm looking to the county to, to help.
Mr. McGlaugh-
Thank you, Judge Blount.
Mr. Coulson.
Terrifying presentation. Wanted to just say that one thing that we should note is that this is, and then you stated, this is low-level offenders, and it's gonna create a path forward for them to be productive citizens, uh, in our community, get a job, get the job back where they normally would have lost, and also, uh, be paying tax pay. So, uh, this, this, this is a, a very good program, and I certainly support it. Thank you for your, your assistance and your participation on the committee. Ms. Coulson.
Chief, thank you. Thanks, Judge. Hope everyone will support this program. It's, uh, it's very close.
Thank you very much, and, um, hopefully, if we do proceed with this, there will be a continued major effort to look for other continued funding. I know you're already working with Don and Grant, so, but it's, that's gonna be very important, I think, that we, you know, do that, 'cause, um, and we'll just have to kind of wait and see what these gentlemen bring back with us.
And I agree. Thank, thank you, Matt Chair, for your, um, your, your comments. And I will say this, I've had a lot of response from the community given, or as feedback from the, the news articles and the press, and everything has been overwhelmingly supportive. I've had a number of people with nonprofits and church and faith groups that, that have heard about this and want to know and how they can help. It's, and I think there's a lot that, that can be done, but the goal is, I want to keep it simple, let's get it started, and, and then, as, as we show some, uh, success, then, um, maybe consider adding, adding services. But, uh, again, thank you, and I will, uh, I'm committed to it, and, um, and we have a, our courthouse community's committed to it. Mr. Kemp, anything?
If you could, Matt Chair, um, there are programs that are already set up, such as Mecklenburg County, uh, County Department of the Way, they are very close to getting through, and they work with each other in trying to succeed. So, uh, we intend, I believe, with this, everything is for this executive director to be able to turn something up, available for the service. The wheel has already just, uh, chipped, except it's just, uh, plugging in to, uh, to where all those possibilities are. So there are things out there, it's just, uh, hopefully moving forward, putting our hands up.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm, Ms. Hance has something for you, Judge, that I, that I had told you, I would get to you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay, now, um, we usually kind of close with, do you have any additional questions or, or things that you would like for these two gentlemen to bring back with us tomorrow that we haven't already spoken about?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'm, I'm gonna read.
You're wel, you don't have to read it, just count.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
If, if not, we-
If, if not, recess and come, we'll come back Thursday morning, 8:30, because tomorrow's County Assembly Day in Raleigh. Everybody's welcome to join us. We need the, we need the state funding for some of these programs, so. Pardon me?
Individually?
We'll coordinate with you. We're gonna take a van down, or you can drive. We'll, we'll-
I know you got a nice ride, but-
Well, we've actually already coordinated, um, those who plan to ride in the county vehicles should be here at 7:00. And we only have four registered to attend, four ladies. So if you want to ride in a vehicle, you can be here at 7:00, if you're driving yourself, if you need directions, let us know.
Thank you. And we will recess until tomorrow. Thank you all.
I am. Well-